For joining us today for the Township Trustee Meeting of October 28th. Please could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we open public comment, just to note that today is First Responders Day, and there are actually three groups that I'd like to, especially since one is in the back here today, but that is police, fire, and DPW, because they are all available 24/7 on an emergency, and yes, I know engineering as well, Corey's like, but those are our first responders, and we are so thankful and blessed to have all of those. First, we have public comment. If you want to come on up and just let us know your name.
Good evening, I'm Mike McCready, 4957 Bloomfield Ridge. Good evening. I have two topics tonight I'd like to discuss. The first one is you have the strategic plan on your agenda for tonight. As I spoke about in the past, these plans usually take about 12 to 18 months to accurately get feedback from the community and then discuss and contemplate the future of the community. I've walked many of the streets and knocked on many doors in our community, and I would tell you not many knew about our strategic plan. I did attend one of the meetings that was held over at the library, and if we all recall, notices were sent out, I think, or into mail on a Thursday for a Tuesday meeting, a Wednesday meeting, and a Wednesday night meeting. Four months have gone by. This is not enough time to really put together a complete thorough strategic plan, and especially if you talk to some of the communities in our area, you'll find the same. They took 12 to 18 months. I would ask that you delay your vote tonight and reconsider going back to the community for further input, and I think we'd all benefit from this. The second item, I couldn't help but notice, Danny, you filed your campaign reports, and 2/3 of your donations came from one family in our community, and they have an agenda item that looks like it'll be up in November in the next two weeks, and I think I really have a problem where it doesn't look good. When you've taken this money from them, when they have an item coming up, it could almost be looked at as a pay-for-play, whether you meant it or not. I think you need to return those funds so that there isn't any kind of obstacle or any observation that that could be the case. And number two is, I'd ask that the board, if it does come up in two weeks, and if you don't know what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the liquor licenses for the gas station, I think we need to delay it till after the election to avoid any observation of a conflict, because I think right now, if you look at it, the appearance of a conflict is there, and we need to erase that and make sure that no one views that as a pay-to-play or any kind of influence going on, whether it was meant to be or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
My name is Mark Intocley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I echo the previous individuals' comments on the strategic plan. I attended two meetings. Both meetings, there were comments about water and sewer rates, the high cost of water and sewer rates, and it appears nowhere in the plan. There's a lot of comments on improved financial transparency as well, yet there's no open checkbook, and we didn't decide to use any of the money, COVID money, for an open checkbook either, and that would have been a great opportunity for us to do that. I wanted to make a comment on the meeting minutes. A new agenda item was added, and I went back and took a look at the April 12, 2021 meeting minutes where trustee Faquie tried to add an item to the agenda, and she had to ask for a vote. I'd like to understand why there was no vote required on the new meeting item agenda that was added, and why the township chose not to follow the rules of order as governed by this board, especially in the light of the divisiveness that occurred two weeks ago. I think it's inappropriate and unjust to not follow the rules of order, especially considering a censure. Whether it's appropriate or not for the censure for this comment is irrelevant. It's the rules of order, and it appears that that was not followed. And it's also consistent with the 15-minute discussion back on April 12, 2021. There was a 15-minute discussion, and then trustee Faquie removed the motion, which was also seconded by Valerie Murray. So why is it appropriate for trustee Faquie to amend an agenda, but the rest of the board not to? It's inappropriate, and it's unjust to both sides of what happened two weeks ago. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up and talk? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Emily. I live at 1230 Fox Chase Road, and I recently, a few days ago, I think it was like last Thursday, a man in camo came up walking on my property, and when I went to go out to talk to him to find out what he was doing, I learned that he was bow hunting and was not intending to bow hunt on my property, but my property abuts, it's wooded, the back area of the lot is wooded. I live on about an acre, and everybody around me is about an acre, and so there's like six of us kind of all together with woods, and two of my neighbors have given permission for folks to bow hunt on their properties, and so we have about four, if not five, bow hunters planning to just be in our woods over the next, until I believe bow hunting season is until January 31st. I've learned a lot about bow hunting in the last couple of days, because I have two small children, I have a one-year-old and a four-year-old, and they play in the woods, and like last year, we built a lean-to against a tree down in this little valley that we have, and it's also where the deer are. So if a bow hunter is looking to shoot the deer, he is most certainly, or she, I guess, within a very close range of my home, and I know from my understanding of bow hunting laws and hunting laws in this area, Bloomfield Township allows bow hunting on residential property, which is not true of all townships, and there is an ordinance or law saying that you can't discharge a firearm within 450 feet of an occupied dwelling, but that does not apply to bow hunting. So currently, I can sit in my children's playroom, and about 30 feet out my window is a deer blind with, I think he's like 20 years old, 20-year-old, with a bow and arrow looking to hit a deer. It's on, it's not on my property, it's on my next-door neighbor's property, and he does have permission to do that, but it is slightly terrifying that where his bow would go may or may not, or his arrow would go, may or may not be that property. And I was floored that bow hunting has been exempt from that safety zone rule that applies to firearms. So I've spoken with the Police Department, the Ordnance Department, I called Michigan DNR, and everybody kind of said, we can't help you, this is the, these are the rules. And Bloomfield Township is where to go to get those changed. So I was just hoping that other folks would be interested. I did not even know that you could hunt in a residential area. I know we have a deer problem. I know we have a lot of really big, beautiful bucks that are walking around that folks would love to get, but it just feels like we're waiting for an accident to happen, and I don't want that accident to be one of my kids. Yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else want to come up? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Next, we have the Board Minutes of October 14th. Now, there might be some changes.
I do have a quick, a couple amendments I've noted. One is in the peril of vouchers, it was mentioned at 6 to 0, but it was 7 to 0, so there's a typo there, and a couple of names, spelling of the names for the individuals who spoke need to be corrected, and with those amendments, unless there's any other amendments, I would make a motion to approve.
Motion by Clerk Brook. Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And next, we have consider the approval of the raffle license to the Catholic Foundation of Michigan. We do have the applicant here today, but has asked that Clerk Brook do the presentation.
Great, so item number three is a routine matter. When individual organization, the 501(c)(3) wants to have a license, they have a raffle, they have to get a license from the township. They've submitted all the required items and the application. It's the Michigan Catholic Foundation of Michigan, and that is the applicant in this case, and the event will be, I think, November 7th.
Are there any questions or concerns, and if not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we have our Community Day, Media Day Proclamation and Awards, presented by Director Carrie Lizotte.
Hello. Hello. I'd like to bring up my operations manager, Greg Black, to read the proclamation.
Whereas the sharing of ideas and information helps to build common understanding and common values within a community, and whereas access to information in today's media environment is critical for the healthy functioning of our community, and whereas community media organizations provide a means for diverse communities to tell their stories, hear each other's stories, and create new stories together, and whereas community media organizations provide information to the community that is not covered by mainstream commercial media, and whereas community media organizations provide people with the skills necessary for the creation, sharing, and consumption of knowledge and ideas through media, and whereas community media is an important resource for participating in local democratic policy and processes, and whereas community media connects community organizations, schools, and local governments to their constituents, and whereas in many communities, people are not aware of the diverse and valuable programming on public, education, and government access channels, or community radio channels, and whereas communities will benefit from increased general awareness of viewing audiences for and creators of media content created by and for the community. Now therefore be it resolved that October 20, 2024 is hereby proclaimed as Community Media Day within Bloomfield Township, and all people are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media, training available at Bloomfield Community Television, and programming available on Comcast Channel 15, AT&amp;T Channel 99, as well as our YouTube, Vimeo, and podcast channels. Be it further resolved that Bloomfield Community Television plays a vital role in the building of our community by encouraging conversations about our common interests, increasing discourse around policy issues, fostering understanding of local cultures, and sharing information to improve our lives.
Do we have to take a vote to put that into? Do we have a motion to accept the proclamation?
And it's very comprehensive, it really covers it well.
Motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
That does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for approving the proclamation tonight, and truly thank you for continuing to support and fund all that was talked about in the proclamation. Supervisor Walsh, you asked me to help grow this department, and I'm so proud of the work that the team has accomplished. Nadine Maynard, who opened the cable building in 1985, came by just today to let us know how happy she was to see all that we've been doing. It is a great privilege to do this work, and it's a great responsibility. Two weeks ago, there were dozens of community members who showed up to tell the stories of what was in their heart, to give testimony. They spoke from their heart, and you've heard me say it before, that storytelling is the heart of our community. That certainly was the case two weeks ago, but tonight we celebrate all the stories that we tell with our award, the newly created BCTV Heart of the Community. So I did want to share a little bit about our creative process, since this is our first award that we've been, we're giving out. Our digital media coordinator, Amy McEag, who's here tonight, she keeps her eye on like all the various calendar events that are coming up that we can celebrate, a variety of things, and she said, this Community Media Day on October 20th, should we do something? I was like, yeah, of course. Well, I say yes to everything, so, which is detriment to my staff sometimes, but, so we started talking about, we've been talking about giving an award for a while now, but it was like, when would be the right time to do it? And this felt really like the right time. And of course, I wanted something beautiful, and on my desk, I had this paperweight that my daughter made at Epiphany Glass, which is next door, and our neighbor in Pontiac, she has a studio there. And so we stood around talking about who should get the awards, and how many can we give out, and then we decided that we wanted to do this. I'm going to take it out of the box. I do want you all to be able to see it, so I'm going to pass that down. That's going to go, so we're giving out four awards tonight, and the first award is for awarding our Community Partner Award in celebration of Community Day. Of course, we must begin with the amazing place that serves as a treasured vault of stories that we can all access, the Bloomfield Township Public Library. So our director, our library director, Tara Moon, is here. If you want to, you can go to the end and pick up the award at the end there when it gets done, Stephanie. So while the physical assets are certainly worth mentioning, it's the staff and community programming that provide, they provide that makes it such a special place. The Bloomfield Township Library is a home of books, music, film, computer sciences, as well as a gathering space for the community, organizations, and clubs, and so, so much more, like early voting now. As host to many free community events such as concerts and lectures, BCTV knows the location of the library well, and we are proud to collaborate with BTPL staff to preserve many of these events through video and bring them into the homes of viewers who cannot be present. A few members of their staff have been recording their podcasts, Distracted Librarians, at our studio. It is a partnership we value, and as the media landscape continues to evolve, I hope to see our partnership deepen. Thank you to library director Tara Moon for your leadership and your staff for being awesome. Albert Einstein famously said, "The only thing that you absolutely need to know is the location of the library." In the decades since he said that, public libraries have transcended the notion of a collection of books available to take home. For these reasons, we are proud to honor the library as our community partner for 2024.
Carrie, before you go on, might I add something real quick?
Yes, of course.
I want to highlight even more about the early voting activity.
I do.
And we chuckled, because it's happening at the library for Bloomfield Township, Southfield Township, and Birmingham voters, which is about 75,000 possible voters, and the library has been the most amazing partner through all of this so far, and I know they will continue to be all the time. The staff is amazing. Saturday, Sunday, and today was an absolute crush of voters at the library, and the people who came were cooperative, the library staff worked through everything and all the issues, the patrons who came, you know, accommodated it, and so far, we've had just from Bloomfield Township, 1,793 voters go through in three days at the library, and it's the most amazing place to hold early voting, and there's been lines literally out the door every day, all day long, and probably more to come for the next several days. So thank you, library, and thank you on behalf of the community, too.
Well, and one last thing was, I was at the library today at 5:00 for, they let us host office hours there for the trustees, and at 5:00, voting closed at 4:30, there was still a line coming out of the voting room, not out the door, and the parking lot was as full as I've ever seen it, which is a testament to the fact that people are using the library and voting. So thank you so much for making us feel welcome.
So my next award, I heard is a surprise for Dr. Prasad, who didn't know that she was going to get an award. She was just brought here by her daughter. So Dr. Prasad, would you please come up and be recognized? Dr. Prasad is our Community Producer of the Year. The mission of PEG TV includes bringing local volunteer producers onto the screens of residents' homes. We take great pride in helping these producers fulfill their vision, and stalwarts like Dr. Daru Prasad exemplify the ideal community producer. Since 2001, she has produced Health Talk, generating at least 20 shows annually as she nears her 600th taping this year. Health Talk hosts local medical professionals in the studio to share their expertise and discuss the latest topics and trends. There was a show early, called the New Coronavirus at one time in early 2020. I know. And when we went back to work, you were one of the first that came back into our studio, and I think your legacy continues as your daughter has just started her show, although it's not medical-related, hers is on legal, legal stuff. Yeah. For your commitment into producing programs that aim to keep its viewers healthy, we are so proud to honor you, Dr. Prasad. You are the heart of our community.
Thank you so much, and I'm very privileged to be in front of all of you and being honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Black will present our next award.
So in municipal government, collaboration amongst departments is a key element in experiencing growth. As individual departments grow, to better understand the day-to-day operations of their coworkers, it allows everyone to find new and exciting ways to serve the residents. So when the senior center had to close its doors in March of 2020, residents who relied on the Center for Fitness classes found themselves at home with no workout plan. So together with fitness coordinator Maggie Barclay, BCTV was able to safely follow guidelines and record several workout routines presented by Maggie for broadcast on our cable channels and online video-on-demand platforms. These classes still are on our channel post-pandemic, and on the rare occasion that a government meeting bumps it from the schedule, we still get phone calls asking, where is Maggie? So for producing programs that benefit the body, mind, and soul, we are very proud to honor fitness coordinator Maggie Barclay.
All right, Steve Rota, it's time to come up, please. So we're actually a little bit late in honoring Steve Rota, because he began his career here in Bloomfield Township as an intern in 1998, and in 1999, he began his tenure as a full-time employee, so it's actually been 26 and a half years, not 25 years. And when we were standing around, Greg says, well, you know, Steve's been here 25 years, like, maybe we should do something for him. And I'm sorry that we cannot roast you tonight, because that would be maybe more appropriate, but not appropriate for this venue.
Thank goodness.
But it was requested.
They did offer.
Your staff did request it, yeah. For many of the communities we serve, when they think of BCTV, they think of you, Steve, Steve Rota. Steve has facilitated production of thousands of programs, and the professionalism and friendly nature of Steve makes an imprint on the producers and talent he works with. They always feel confident that Steve has everything under control and will deliver a product they'll be proud of. In his current role as operation manager for cable, Steve is the guiding light for our part-time production staff. Greg wrote that. They see what the BCTV standard is in the way Steve interacts with the public, elected officials, coworkers, and production staff. BCTV has a high standard of integrity and respect, set and modeled by your work ethic. Now, several months ago, I have to tell you that department heads and other township staff went through some leadership training, and in it, there were four personality and work styles that were identified: director, expresser, thinker, and harmonizer. And when I read the traits of the harmonizer, I immediately knew who mine was. I want to read you these traits, because they say who you are. Very attentive and listens well. Well, maybe not that one. But this one definitely. Attuned to people's feelings, focused on the group's well-being, can offer to take on more work than they can handle, express pride to others in their work. Steve is the first to ask, how was your weekend? He checks in on his colleagues who have been sick, and he texts holiday greetings. And while we recognize your professionalism and outstanding eye for the camera and technical abilities, it's these other traits that make you a pleasure to work with. He's a proud father of five, and a husband. We get to meet his wife tonight. So exciting. We had to give him an award so we can meet her. We are so lucky to have you helping lead the team in the work we do. In recognition of your commitment to the township and all the PEG production stands for and your years of service, Steve Rota, you are the heart of the community.
Carrie, before you let him leave, he did agree to either say something or his family would roast him.
Oh, he said he would do.
I was told I didn't have to speak.
I didn't ask you to talk, so.
But I hear the Oscar, the Oscar Emmy music's playing right now, they want me off the stage, so. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, for, you know, 26 years that I've been here. I've worked with a lot of great people and met a lot of great people, made some great friends. I want to thank my colleagues, my friends, and my family for showing up today, and I want to thank Carrie for presenting an award, and an awesome team we have, and the township's just a great place to work, and hopefully I'll be here another 25 years, even though Carrie wants me to leave in like five, so. Actually, I think yesterday she wanted me to leave, so. But again, I appreciate, appreciate the award, and thanks again, and I continue to work hard and continue to work with everybody here in the township, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, everybody. So next, we have, actually are going to have Michelle Kennedy on Zoom, and she is with Barry Dunn. So our next is considering the approval of Bloomfield Township Strategic Plan for 2025. I do want to say first, Michelle, thank you for your patience. When you're doing this during a political season, you have put up with a lot of comments that nobody should ever put up with, so, and I wish she would have stayed to hear this, but they are actually not just experts in their field, but they just won the award for the best county strategic plan in the U.S. So when we're being compared to others, and why is ours going faster than others, we hired experts, so we didn't use somebody's friend of a friend who might know something about it and took a while to learn about it, we didn't use somebody who didn't use technology. We are using the best in the United States, and it's not going fast. These usually take four to six months, that's what ours took. A lot of people confuse strategic plans, master plans, so the master plan does take approximately 18 months, that will be next. But this is something, I am so impressed with your patience and the way you guys bite your tongue as leaders in this industry. Congratulations on your award for the best county strategic plan in the United States, and I also want to thank you for picking us, as they are going to be in Milwaukee for the future leaders and future emerging governments of the future, for the CVT version. So they have DuPage, Illinois, is who they won with the county, it's the second-largest in Illinois, right behind Cook County. They picked Colorado Springs, which is their very large municipality that they did, that's also known as Olympics USA, and they picked us, because when it comes to their regular-sized CVTs, we are the best that they've done. So thank you for your patience in a political climate when you have been attacked every meeting, thank you for all the facilitations that you've done, and I just am so excited to have you present the final project of all the hard work of everybody. Over 3,000 people were involved in this, and that's pretty impressive in this community. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Danny. Well, it's been a privilege to work with Bloomfield Township and serve you along with communities all over the United States, and having a strategic plan, which is a best practice for a local government, so it's been a pleasure to be of service to the township. I would just like to say that I hope that the Board of Trustees feels a high level of confidence in the data that you had to work with to create this plan. Part of, part of it is because of what Danny said about the level of direct involvement of residents. Part of it is because of what Dani said about the level of direct involvement of residents. 3,000 people were directly involved in the process through one of the many channels that we made available. That is a higher number than we get sometimes in much, much larger communities. So you should be proud of that, first of all, as a township that has good enough communication and engagement with your community that that many people chose to participate. So that's one piece of it. The second piece...
I hate to interrupt, but I also want something else that's been misunderstood many times, and you actually guided us on. The old-school way of inviting people to things, like even with weddings, it used to be two months. Nobody remembers it. They skip the wedding. The suggestion you had of people are so busy, they won't remember things past seven days. Send out your alerts the week before is why we had probably such a great turnout, because people got it, they remembered it, and they showed up. So thank you also for getting us out of that archaic way of sending it out a couple months early. So I know that got mentioned again tonight. So actually, it was your suggestion, and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. The other point I wanted to make was that this township made a choice to do a statistically valid community survey, which is not as common as you might think. I would say probably in my 30 years of doing this work, if I added up all of the clients that I have worked with, I would say not more than a third have opted to do a statistically valid survey. And what's important about that is when the survey is statistically valid, you have a high level of confidence. In your case, it was 95% within a range of error of 3.47% one direction or the other. What that allows you to know is that you can rely on that, you can have high confidence in those survey results in terms of making decisions about what to prioritize in your strategic plan. And the other thing that was interesting about the survey and the results that came from it is that they mirrored what we were hearing from community members, right? It mirrored our interviews, our focus groups, the community forums that we held, the trend of comments that we were seeing on the virtual engagement platform that Barry Dunn stood up on behalf of the township to provide yet another avenue for people to comment. So I want to say that we employed the best practices that we use with every client that we do this work for across the country. And the township decided to invest in something more robust, which many of our clients do not choose to do. And so I just want to leave you with that to say that the Board of Trustees had good data upon which to begin building the plan, and that that data was robust, both qualitative and quantitative. So with that, I'd like to share the very final product of this process. Well, it's not the final product. It's the final sort of, I think, product that the public will generally see because this will be on the township's website and will be something that I'm sure you make widely available to your community. But this is the strategic plan that we need you to adopt because what comes next is actually the next exciting part, which is the development of an implementation plan, which Barry Dunn will be helping the township to complete. And the implementation plan, the strategic plan is the what. It's what you're going to do, what you're going to focus on, what you're going to focus your time, capacity, and resources on. And the implementation plan is how. And it will include things like, okay, which department in the township is lead for this particular objective, and who will be working on that objective? And what are the resource requirements for that objective? Is it staff time? Do we need to go out and get a grant? Do we have to redirect some of our budget resources in order to make this happen? What's the timeline for completing on that objective? What are the action, all the action steps that we have to do to complete that objective? And then what are the performance measures for that objective? So all of that will go into a very detailed implementation plan that will guide your department leaders and their teams in actually implementing a strategic plan. Because if you don't have that implementation plan, this final product that I'm showing you tonight would sit on a shelf, and then you haven't reaped the investment, the significant investment that you've made of your time and energy and your community's time and energy into creating this plan. So that's the big next step that comes after tonight, when you adopt the plan. So I'd like to walk you through this final product. Well, before I do, I'd like to say one more thing. We met with you two weeks ago and took your input. I want to give a little bit of praise to the board because you tackled this with every bit of interest that you did when we had your plan development session, and you had just participated in three and a half hours of public comment period. And you all gave your all to the review of this. And so my colleague and I, Jen, who was in person for that meeting, listened very carefully to the changes that you wanted. And we also went back and listened to the recordings so that we could capture all of your thinking. And in your board preparation, you received sort of the redlined version of the content changes we made to the plan. And so I think your, all of your comments were reflected, and we made the changes that you asked for. And so now we have this very final version of the plan to share in its designed version that you're going to see right now. So we have the cover. Our designer worked on trying to pick up a little bit on the look and feel of Bloomfield Township as a community, so she chose to do a collage to try and show some different aspects of the township. Next slide. Table of contents, we'll just go past that, just lays out what's in the plan. This opening message is from the Strategic Planning Committee, and the individuals represented there were a combination of elected officials and department leadership. And this committee spent time every week helping to execute on the plan and the process that Barry Dunn set up. And so they were highly engaged, and this is their letter to the community, talking about the significance of this plan and what it means. Next slide. We have an introduction which introduces people to what the strategic plan is. It's a living document. It's a framework for decision-making, for making budget and policy decisions. It provides guidance and direction to the township board, to the department directors, and being a public document that the community can look at and hold the township accountable for the things that it has included in this plan. And then there's just a note about participation in township meetings, and then, you know, the township Board of Trustees depicted there. Next slide. So this is what we reviewed two weeks ago. It's your mission, vision, and values, including the edits that you had requested. This lays out, again, your purpose for being, your aspirational goal for where you would like to see your organization and your community go, and then the values by which people will carry out the activities of the city. Next slide. So you have five strategic priorities that you identified. We went through each of these in detail last time. Best-in-class government, which is the more internally-focused strategic priority that talks about how you want to improve your county government as an organization. Vibrant lifestyle, which is about community life and enjoyment of life in the township. Welcoming community is the ability for people to participate and live a full life in the community. Enhanced community character is about keeping and also evolving the character of your community. And then, of course, something that's very important is infrastructure and making sure that it's reliable and resilient and can meet the needs of many future generations. Next slide. This explains why it's important to have a strategic plan, and it lays out, again, those five defined priorities, and it talks about how the plan is used. Next slide. This is the priority of vibrant lifestyle. Again, we went through all of this in detail two weeks ago. So you have the goal statement, so it's kind of like a five-year goal for vibrant lifestyle, with the objectives, the outcomes that you hope to achieve by focusing on that goal and the objectives. And then if you go to the next slide, there's the list of all the performance measures, the ways in which the township will measure its progress toward that five-year goal and those set of objectives that are part of this. And each of the priorities follows the same structure. Next slide. So again, welcoming community, same thing. Next slide. Outcomes and performance measures. And then enhancing community character. One change you made here was you wanted to capture the sense of the community character, we want to preserve what we love about it, and that it will evolve over time. So we kind of really listened to that discussion and fine-tuned this according to your thoughts. Next slide. Then you can go on and go to the next one. And then the reliable infrastructure goal, which is about making sure you have a strong capital improvement program, that it's funded, and that, again, you're going to be able to provide those infrastructure services that the community relies upon for safety and well-being. And then the last one is the internal-focused one, which is the best-in-class government. If you would go to the next slide. Thank you. And you will see these objectives are really about helping to make the best workforce, to be an employer of choice, to be, have all of your operations and your technology be modern and available and able to create efficient and effective service delivery for the community. And then you can, yep, you can skip by that, and then we'll go to the next one. So this gives a little bit of background of how we arrived at the plan. It gives the timeline for the plan and what we did in each of those phases. And I would just like to echo here that longer doesn't necessarily mean better. What matters is that you provide many opportunities and many different channels and ways for people to get engaged in the process, which is what we did, and that when you gather all of that data across those multiple channels, that you see similar themes and that the themes are aligning. And that's how you know what the priorities can and should be, because those themes keep coming up over and over and over again across all the different channels through which you're obtaining input. Next slide. This is the what's next. This describes to the community what happens now that we have a strategic plan, talks a little bit about the implementation plan. It also talks about the commitment that the township has to tracking progress and reporting progress. So it lays out what will happen on a monthly, quarterly, twice-a-year, and annual basis. This plan will live on the township's website, and as the township begins to implement, you can report progress on your website, on those performance measures that are part of this plan. This is a summary that Dani was referring to a little bit earlier when she was giving an introduction to this item on the agenda. If you add up all of those interactions, it's about 3,000 participants, and that doesn't include all of the department participants in this process, and there were many of those as well. And then it also gives a description of what we mean by statistical validity for the community survey and why that's important, and why you can really rely on those results when making decisions about strategy. And then the acknowledgements page. Barry Dunn facilitated a process. The people that participated on the committee and in the work sessions and that came to the community forums and that answered the survey and that took time to comment on the social pinpoint platform and attended an interview, whether that was a group interview or an individual interview, are the people that created this plan. We guided the process, but there were, you know, 3,000 community members who have a part and a role in the creation of this plan. And the township as a community, not just the board and the government itself, but the township of the community should be proud of that. Next slide. See how long the acknowledgements are, really trying to fit in the individual names. We didn't list the names of every single person who came to a community forum, but people who participated in interviews, we definitely wanted to acknowledge them. That was a significant time commitment. Next slide. So the acknowledgements ended up being a really big part of this, and I think, again, to emphasize, it was robust participation from the community. And again, for a community of a population of about 45,000 people, you far exceeded the level of participation we get in municipalities that are 500,000 and more. So again, I, having spent some time there and talked with community members there, I really believe that speaks to the strong connection that the township does have with the community and the effort that it has put into communicating with the community. So I will stop there and just be happy to respond to any questions that you have. Clarify anything else you're interested in knowing as we try to wrap up the strategic plan and move into implementation planning.
You have questions?
I have an observation and a thought I want to share, which is, which is, the product looks amazing, and I want to thank everybody that's worked on this and developed the strategic plan. And the stakeholder list is incredible. The committee that worked on this, thanks very much for all that hard work. You know, it, of course, couldn't have happened without the participation of all the department heads and so many people within the township, the government itself, including the people in the community. And, you know, it was great to see that even our last meeting, as you mentioned, after, at such a late time in the day, we had some thoughts, they've incorporated here, and I appreciate that flexibility as we, you know, we're nearing the end of this process. And the final product looks very nice. You know, so kudos to, again, everybody that was involved. And, you know, I think that's, you know, it speaks volumes of the level of participation and talent that was engaged on this project.
So I just have one comment. I think it looks wonderful. I think you did a really great job. Again, you know, I attended the meetings here and the meetings at the library, but I was not on the immediate group, and I think they did an awesome job. But something that jumped out at me, probably some of my background, I used to be in advertising, is I see what you're doing with the grading of the photos, but I think sometimes it's distractingly, makes the pictures look blurred, less crisp. I like the pictures where you have it more crisp. I think in time, it's going to make it look older and more faded in a printed version. And I don't know, I just, I guess I'd rather see, the pictures look like they weren't great quality because of using that effect. I see what you're trying to do is make it so it blends with the type, but personally, I would just rather see the crisp picture, even if you had to make it slightly smaller to fit your type. But the plan itself, awesome. And I do like the look of the whole presentation. I just, I find those distracting.
Is there a way that, is there one in particular that, is it the trustee one that maybe we could have the faces be a little clearer? Is that where...
The trustee one.
I kind of agree with what trustee Marie's saying. Like, the photos almost look, some of them look pixelated, and then the other ones look, like, faded, almost, like the color is too faded.
Yeah, like the one of the big group where they're standing in the, like, covered outdoor, whatever. I'm not sure where that is. But this is...
Is it possible that some of that's just from the printer we used in my office? I don't know if it is.
No, it's an effect.
No, it's an effect.
They were trying to fade in, that's what they, they have like different options.
No, and I think it makes the faces look blurred. I think it takes away from the quality of, it was probably a very well-taken photograph that has a much higher resolution. And I think many of them, it sort of loses it. And I think, again, in time, it's going to almost look more like maybe these faded, like the fire station even. It just looks all washed out. My personal opinion.
Is there a way to make them more vibrant color?
Yeah. We can remove that effect. The designer can... The designer can change, you know, we can still swap out pictures. Clearly, we took the photos that the township gave us. And again, I think a lot of the photos were probably high-quality, some of them were maybe not as high of quality as others. But yeah, if you don't like that effect, that is something that can be changed, and that isn't hard to do.
Yeah, I think it's just an effect, because like, the front cover and the back cover, every photo is crisp. I just think it presents better, especially the ones where there's people, the ones with the fire department, they look kind of washed out.
Yeah, maybe just make them pop a little bit.
No, it's an effect. They either put it in or they, I mean, the photo was, I'm sure was fine.
Yeah. Oh, they, yeah, they were. Any other questions, comments, changes?
Just one comment, unless I'm missing something in the acknowledgements. I know Steffi and I, Stephanie and I were together in our meeting, and I, for some reason, I'm missing my name in here under account.
You are, it's all alphabetical, so you'd be on the one, you're there.
I saw you.
You're, you're right there on the, so you're right there.
You know what, I was looking on acknowledgements.
So you're on the, it's all alphabetical, so you're part of the stakeholder panelists?
Okay.
So the first of the five of us that literally met every single Thursday from April till now, then it was the work session committee, which is all of the directors that spent hours and hours and hours. And then stakeholder panelists spent anywhere from 30-minute single interviews or hour-long interviews. And then, so Stephanie, I believe you're on page 22?
Oh, I saw her, I saw Stephanie's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on there.
Yeah.
But I did want to thank you, your team, and our department's heads and our staff did a great job in putting this together and listening to people. And certainly, it's, you know, we listened to the board also, obviously. It was a good relationship, and certainly, it's a very good product.
I want to give kudos to the board about that statistically valid survey. That was an investment of $25,000 that the board agreed to do to make sure it's right. And it came up today of, sometimes the loudest voice isn't always the majority voice. And I was a fly on the wall at all those, not the leadership meetings, but all of the in-person meetings. And there was one person who was right. It was mentioned about water and sewer at each one. And then the group kind of veered away of, although that might have been a concern, that wasn't their biggest. So that might have been the loudest voice there, but then the rest, quieter voices came forward with more information. And that's where that valid survey made a big difference. So I appreciate that you all agreed that that was an investment that we needed to take, because that was a significant $25,000 investment to know this is real data, and I appreciate that. Any other comments, questions?
I have a, I have an idea I just wanted to explore. And that is, in one of the prior sessions, I mentioned, or a couple people mentioned, the advisability of having a, an addition, having, adopting this as, say, a preliminary, and then distributing it to the community for feedback before adopting a final. And I think you mentioned that's something that's been done from time to time and services you all, you all perform. And I wonder if that might be something we could entertain for this document, which I, which, as I said earlier, I think is fabulous. But what do you think about adding, you know, a feedback, one more feedback loop here at the end to distribute a preliminary plan and then finalize a few months later?
So Michelle, I know you and I met with, or actually, the strategic planning committee talked about that. Do you want to let him know how often that's actually done?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty rare. There are a few clients that have wanted to do that. I think the ones that do statistically valid surveys tend to not do that last loop because of how much you can rely upon the data. And as you know, the strategic priorities were selected based on that data. Even some of the objectives that are in the plan are, were, you know, very aligned with what we heard from the community. So it's done, but very infrequently. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, but, you know, the times that we have done it, I can think back to one fairly recently. It's actually a community in Oregon. It's a little larger than you are, about 140,000 residents. We did that, and we did it via a survey of the community where they had access to the document, and they could answer questions and have open-ended comments. And two things, one, the reason they did it is because they had had a, a sort of, like, preamble community visioning process that had predated our strategic planning engagement with them, and they kind of wanted to re-engage high-touch with the community. And so we didn't do a community engagement process the way that we did that on your project. So they wanted to make that connection back. And then, so, so it made sense for them to do it. The, the feedback that we got didn't really cause changes to the plan. A lot of it was really more the community wanting to understand more, which those questions and thoughts were able to be answered as the, as the city started implementing the plan. So I'm not saying it doesn't have value, but there are really good reasons to do it, and then there are reasons why you might not, it might not be as necessary and with as robust as your original engagement process was and with a statistically valid survey. I don't know that you are going to get any new input at that point. So that's what I'll say about it. It's, and it is, it's a, it's a client-by-client choice, for sure.
And it was interesting, when we had that meeting, to talk about that, when you said, I think there were maybe one or two times where the statistically valid survey was used, and they still, but they didn't do forums, or they only did one forum. And literally everything à la carte that you had, we picked.
You did.
We picked three out of three forums, we picked all of these. And in that meeting, I don't even know that we were given one name of anybody who did every single thing on your list and still said, I wonder if this is valid. So that's when we, as a committee, said, hey, this is pretty darn good then, which is probably why you picked it to be the example in, in the, is it the international, what does the ICMA stand for again, City Managers Association?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The International, City Managers Association, City Managers Association, City Management Association, yes, ICMA. It's for their two regional reinventing local government conferences. One is in Milwaukee and one is in Denver, I believe.
Yeah. So it did come up. It just was kind of thwarted from the fact that it just isn't something done with something as robust.
Yeah, and I do think that, you know, that the product is, is, is great, and I'm more than happy to, to support it. And I, and the reason why I suggest, you know, distributing it to the community and giving them some time to provide us additional thoughts is less about the content and more about engagement. You know, what we've done here is really great, but maybe there's an opportunity to do more engagement, to more deeply touch the folks in the community on this topic. And by touching them, you know, giving them a copy of it and asking them to provide feedback with some time to do that, doesn't mean that we'll actually get any feedback that we adopt into the plan. But everybody will have had, had, had the opportunity to know that they saw the draft plan and could have commented on the draft plan during the time that was provided. And who knows, we may get a few good ideas that we would change the draft to a final or preliminary to a final plan during that period of time. But we certainly at least give some feedback to everybody who bothered to provide some comments. But, but that's, that's my main point, is, is, I'm not sure there's more ideas out there or better ideas or different ideas, whether we, or that this plan in any way I'm criticizing, because I'm not, I think it's a good plan. But I do think that additional feedback is always just a plus, and additional engagement can't hurt. So that's, that's the suggestion I have.
Any other comments?
With, yeah, with the implementation, when we go to the, to that step, does that give the opportunity, even though it's, I would assume a lot of that's done internally and with your consultation, is there still the opportunity for the community to see what's going on, to, to be touched as far as seeing that that plan has been developed? So there's more opportunity that they're aware of what's been going on, you know, with the plan. Not necessarily to change it, but to, you know, notification, so they're aware of what the plan's been developed and it's in the process.
I think what, what's, we've seen be really effective is that clients, when they can adopt the plan, understand kind of what their process for implementation is, so they can speak to it at least even on a high level, to communicate the plan to the community through a variety of different ways, including a town hall, for example, you know, promoting it through media channels. Really, it's the communication of the plan to the community that I think most of our clients really want to invest a lot into, because they want the community to become familiar with the plan, so that the community will be aware of changes that will come, new things that will happen. They'll also get used to the idea of having a strategic plan, so that then each time you update the plan, the engagement from the community becomes more robust. And with clients that I've worked with over a long period of time, one of them, one of my clients I've worked with since 2007, coming back and updating and refreshing their plan, including all the way up through to 2023, the most recent update, they now have a regular engagement cycle that their community is familiar with. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing when your community knows what you're going to do and that you don't have to go begging to have them give you input, because they're already aware of your plan, and they're eager to tell you what they think in terms of how the progress is going. And then when you go to update your plan in four years, they're, they're much more aware of what's going on, and they're much more eager to be participants in the process.
I think that's a great idea, as far as keeping the community involved and communicating to them, and also the idea of a town hall as we move further along to keep people aware of what we're doing. I think it's a great idea.
Are there any other comments? Like, you were involved a lot. Do you have anything that you want to add?
I, I'd defer to the other trustees to see if anybody else has any comments as to Martin's suggestion.
So I understand that he's trying to continue the engagement, which is something that people have talked to us at times and asked for transparent government and to be engaged. I think we did get a lot of involvement from the community and community leaders, as we see on the acknowledgement pages. But to trustee Barnett's point is making sure that as we do the implementation process and planning, that we have study sessions or town halls and continue to make sure that we communicate with the residents of the plan they already asked us to do and that we've acknowledged it, and that now they're going to hold us to that standard. So I really like what trustee Barnett said.
And I certainly have some agreement with what Martin is saying, but after listening to our consultant as far as the statistical value of what we have and presenting this to the township residents, that we're really not going to have any continued value as far as far as the input that we're going to receive, since the statistical value is so strong in the product that we have.
So I, I do like the resident engagement and that as we implement and, you know, see what, like you said, hold us accountable, make sure we follow through, update on these, you know, now we've implemented this, now we've implemented that. I think that, that works for me, because to open it up again, if we got 10 or 50 comments, are we going to get anything that's going to say, let's go back to the drawing board on that at this point? So I, I'm okay with, with going ahead and just keeping it very public and open in the implementation process. Yeah?
Okay, well, so I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, as part of this process, and, you know, I'm, I'm proud of this plan, I'm proud to put my name on it as one of the committee members. I think it definitely encapsulates the feedback that we received, the input from the community across the different channels that we went to them, through the internet, through the face-to-face meetings, the stakeholder meetings, the interviews. We had, you know, a lot of people in here, I remember, different groups of the chambers of commerce and business owners and, I mean, school principals, I mean, just various members of the community, you know, that you could think of, all provided input on this plan. And I think that what we have here is an actionable plan. It's something that we can, you know, have ready to go, you know, so whoever's sitting in our seats in three weeks, four weeks, has a roadmap on where to go, based on community feedback and based on our best thinking. So, you know, I'm supportive of it.
I do agree that you are correct. The more we can get to the public during implementation, the better it'll be overall. I'm huge, as everyone knows, into strategic plans, because it forces accountability. So you don't, just like you said, you even put the supervisor on the hook for quite a few of these reports. So it does, it forces accountability. And we've seen what happens when there's no plan. People shoot from the hip, what's in front of our face right now? And we don't want to go back to that. So this, like you said, in three weeks, there might be changes at this board, and it's overwhelming to say, where do we start? And they can say, here it is, this is where you start. So I am a big fan of actionable items that people are held accountable to. But for sure, you are correct. Put it out to the public, get as much involvement as possible, so that they do hold us accountable.
Yeah, I think Neil's point was a good one, which is this, it is sort of, you know, both his kind of mind and the comments we've heard from others are, where do we go from here? What's next? How do we make sure we're engaging people, that we're building the trust that's required to have a plan like this? And that's the basis of my suggestion. I think it's a similar one to what Neil's talking about, and, you know, we have a really robust communication plan with regard to, here, here's the plan, here's some next steps. We need to start talking about, you know, how to, how to implement the plan. And that is also another engagement, you know, point, which can build trust and foster engagement with the township. So I just look forward to hearing more about the implementation phase and how we're going to communicate it and engage people like we have. If we do it like we have already, that'll be, I think, a really great thing. So again, I want to, you know, commend everybody on the hard work and, and, and kudos to everybody for preparing such a nice document.
Unless there's any other discussion, do we have a motion?
We make a motion that we approve the plan is presented to us tonight.
Support. Motion by trustee Barnett, supported by trustee Murray.
Good question. There was some discussion about modifying the photos. Do you want to include that in your motion?
Yeah.
Can include that, yes.
And I still support that.
Yeah. So motion by trustee Barnett, supported by trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That does pass. Thank you so much, Michelle, and please pass on our thanks to Maddie and Jen and Keith as well.
Will, will do, and we look forward to now assisting you with the implementation planning, which is super important, to make sure that everything is in place to have you be successful with this plan. So we'll, we'll get to work on that now that the plan's been adopted.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so next we are going to a public hearing, so we'll start.
It's not, oh, what's that? It's actually the setting of a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, setting of the public.
It's okay.
I apologize. Setting of the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Application for Program Year 2025.
Yes. Director tomorrow. Thank you. So Senior Services manages the Community Development Block Grant Program to enhance safety and support residents 62 years of age or more. The grant sustains our Meals on Wheels program and the Minor Home Repair Program. With your support, we will continue these services in program year 2025. The estimated allocation is 49,000, and they are for, that, those funds are for projects that principally benefit low and moderate-income persons and senior citizens. We are requesting that the board call for a public hearing to be held Monday, November 11th, 2024, so two weeks. The program details and impact will be presented that evening, just prior to public comment. I believe that you have a recommendation to call for the public hearing? If not, I can read something.
Did you want to read it first?
I will. We are asking the board to approve a call- We are asking the board to approve a call for a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Application Plan Year 2025, to be scheduled on Monday, November 11th, 2024, and allow for the public notice to be posted at Township Hall and on the Township website for at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
We have a motion. Motion by Clerk Brook.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinski, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That does pass.
Excellent. I'll see you again in two weeks.
You can stay on up there for the next one.
I am.
So consider a ward for the pool renovations at the Senior Center.
Yes. So as you might know, I'm not used to having funds to spend on large projects, so this is exciting for me. The Senior Center offers 25 aquatic programs weekly. Customers appreciate low-impact exercise, relaxation, and socialization offered in the warm water pool. After 15 years of use, the pool now needs resurfacing. A request for bids was posted to the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, or MITIN, and five bids were received, with the following, three bids being the lowest: advanced pool services, clear water construction, and B&amp;B pools. After reviewing the bids, work plans, and references, we are recommending that the project be awarded to Advanced Pool Services for $40,250, which was the lowest bid. Advanced Pool Services has a strong record of service with their clients, including large projects with the Huron-Clinton Metro Parks and also Oakland County. We believe they will provide high-quality materials and workmanship. The detailed quotes for the three lowest bids were included for your review. The Senior Center's ARPA award from Oakland County allows for capital improvements and investments to enhance safety and participation. This is the first project to be presented for the use of those funds. So with your approval, or questions first, I will move forward with Advanced Pool Services.
Do you have any questions? If not, I look for a motion.
It's a, it's a great pool, glad to see it staying resurfaced, and thank you for bringing it to us. I would make a motion that we approve.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinski, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes. And you got another one.
Excellent.
Consider a ward for fitness equipment replacement at the Senior Center.
Yep. Project number two. The pneumatic strength training system by HUR, H-U-R, is an exceptional resource for residents. The unique design is engineered for less impact on joints and straightforward use for people of all abilities. Of our 20 machines, nine are currently 24 years old. They're reaching the end of their useful life. We are proposing to replace the oldest machines, as outlined in the attached quote. HUR is the sole source provider of the machines that work within our pneumatic system and are highly valued by our customers. HUR, in fact, stands for Helsinki University Research, and they are a leader in active aging and inclusive exercise developments globally. So this is a second request to utilize Senior Services Oakland County ARPA grant, and with any questions or with your approval, we'll move forward with placing that order. Oh, I have a correction. So your memo, I did an estimate as to the shipping cost, without realizing that they were going to have to come from Finland instead of somewhere in the United States. So I think I said not to exceed 1,500, and the actual shipping we received today is So that's a change that we would need to amend the motion for. Yep.
Questions?
So instead of being the 58,902, we're going to add the shipping. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And it takes four months.
No, I said you have a question. Like, you still have the crisp face.
Great.
No?
No.
Any other questions? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kalinski.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. That passes.
Thank you so much. I'll be sure to invite you all to the ribbon cuttings when all the equipment comes.
Great.
Thank you.
So we have document management project update and consider award of contract to ICC CDS Laserfish Cloud, presented by Clerk Brook.
Okay, good evening, folks. We're here to talk about the document management project and scanning project. The first part will be to review where we've been on the document management system, and act, discuss questions on that, act on that, and then start a conversation concerning scanning solutions. And with me here tonight, or with us here tonight, is the president of Security Archives, Taylor Leiden. Will is here from IT, and Bill Saford, where's Bill? Safady is somewhere, there he is. Oh, and Talise Too, so.
Yes.
Great, we have the whole team.
Okay.
And I wanted to just, Taylor, pass it over to you.
Kevin. Thanks, Martin. Good evening, everyone. As Martin noted, my name's Taylor Leiden, I'm the president and owner of Security Archives Data Management, joined by my colleagues Bill Safady and Talise Bolden. They play an integral role, are playing an integral role in this predictive initiative with the township. Thank you for including us tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to discuss services provided. As you may or may not recall, we participated in the, one of the January board meetings as the selected vendor to assist and lead the township in the identification, selection, and implementation of a document management software solution, really to solve for the accumulation, as Martin pointed out, of 200-plus years of records in both physical and digital form, that are kept in varying methods and cross varied repositories. And so the goal was to implement a document management solution, a new platform, that would provide an organized, compliant, and modern records management program that the township could utilize in the future. I'm happy to report that the project is on time and on budget, something I'm always happy to report on, and we want to thank the collaborative efforts of the township. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone, and in particular, the leadership of Martin and his team, including Deena and Will. When we were selected for the, when we were selected as a vendor for this particular initiative, we had proposed a five-phase work plan, which you'll see detailed on the slide here. We've used this work plan in other engagements of almost exact same scope and deliverables with great success, and we're very pleased with how it's worked for the township's initiative. It's kicked off with a meeting of all the key stakeholders, which really provides us, as in Security Archives, with the opportunity to get a, you know, quote-unquote, lay of the land, understand the organizational structure, the IT infrastructure, areas of concern, the areas of focus, as we move to a really key step in Phase Two, which is the interviews of the individual departments. Over the course of about 45 days, we conducted 17 departmental interviews across the 16 township departments, face-to-face, although via virtual forum, today's face-to-face. This is really a critical step in the work plan, as these interviews are utilized to really understand how records are being utilized across the departments, how they're engaging and interacting with the different record types. So what records are they utilizing in their work? How are they being created? How are they being accepted? How are they being delivered? Where are they being stored? Are they physical? Are they digital? How are they being indexed, retrieved? What is their retention schedule? What other applications are involved? And so the information that we garner through these departmental interviews, 17 in total, really shapes the creation and the, as we entered Phase Three, of a needs assessment, which can be thought of as maybe an overall, you know, organizational records management analysis. And you'll see, this is the table of content, it's highlighted, although I can, I realize now, no one can read this. On the left-hand side of the page, it shows a two-table of contents of, thank you, of the needs assessment that we have provided the township. And you'll see that there's the inclusion of the breakdown of each departmental survey and a summary, if you don't mind zooming back out for a second, a summary of all the departmental records utilized in each particular department. This is a very small snapshot, but you'll see it's document type by document type and their use case, essentially. Again, the information that's garnered through this critical step of departmental interviews really creates, or that's the information utilized in creating an analysis and an implementation recommendation. And ultimately, this information is utilized in the creation of an RFP. In the RFP, it's critical in creating the specifications that are needed for a document management solution that will not only meet the township's needs today, but well into the future. And so we wanted a very robust RFP to ensure that all the capabilities were met by any respondents. So the RFP was published in April, all vendor responses were due by the end of May, and we were, we were very pleased to have 21 unique vendor submissions. As you might imagine, the submissions varied across the spectrum of services and pricing. And so our team helped provide a market survey and DMS analysis, or document management solutions analysis, that the township used in what we consider a very comprehensive and robust due diligence process, to select those vendors to move to Phase Two of the procurement process. Again, I'm now realizing this is very hard to read, but this was just a very small snapshot as to some of the information that was provided in evaluating all of the different DMS solutions that were offered. Again, it was just part of, this is a very small snapshot, of what we consider a very comprehensive and robust due diligence process by the township team in the selection of what was to be the three finalists. So Phase Two of the procurement process was the selection of these three vendors to move to a live demonstration. The live demonstrations were all virtually held, approximately 90 minutes in duration. There's a wider township audience, some of you obviously were involved, and this is where the vendors were able to showcase their software platform. So think features and functions, user interface, intuitive platform. Not only that, but we had requested that all vendors utilize an actual file folder structure or taxonomy, using existing wetland permits for the township's current records. And so everyone involved got to see a real-time example of how the township's records would be organized, implemented, and kept within each particular proposed software solution. I think that, I don't want to speak out of turn, I think that everyone would agree that all three vendors demonstrated a comprehensive and turnkey solution that could be used successfully by the township for their current needs and future needs. But really, I think one really stood out from the rest for a couple of different reasons, and is the recommended vendor that Martin and team are proposing tonight. And that's ICC CDS implementing the Laserfish software solution. ICC CDS is based in upstate New York. They have over 1,000 local government customer installations across the country, and more than 50 of those installations are locally here in Michigan. And what that really provides is an expertise in this partner, in their understanding of what sort of records are utilized in a municipal's records management program. So what files are utilized, file structure, workflow process, and more. In addition to this kind of expertise that they bring to the table, due to all the installations that they've conducted, we also felt that their user interface and user experience was very intuitive. And I think one of the, one of the strength that was highlighted by Martin and team was their compatibility with the applications that the townships are utilizing, in things like BSNA, G, you know, GIS, and the New World Financial application. So ultimately, you know, based on them meeting all the required capabilities, having a very robust capability set, and a very competitive price to boot, they were selected as a recommended vendor, I shouldn't say selected, but they're being put forth as a recommended vendor. And so with that said, we're happy to stop and take any questions about the process in narrowing it down to ICC CDS, but certainly as an outside consultant, we definitely agree with this selection, and think that it can certainly meet the township's requirements for today's needs, but also you can have confidence knowing that it will also solve for the future needs of the township in solving for a formal and organized document management solution into the future. So with that said, we can open it up to discuss and review contract and consideration of our resolution. If that's appropriate, I don't know.
No questions?
Just let me quickly wrap, but sort of bring it back here. You know, Taylor summarized things pretty good about where we're at, and one thing that I wanted to highlight, and we probably discussed it back in January when we kicked this project off, but you may or may not know, about a decade ago, the township engaged in a process to, you know, scan some records and to provide a software solution to help the township manage its work. And, you know, regrettably, you know, that's really proved to be an unsuccessful choice at that time, which is why we're sort of, we're back here now, looking for a more robust solution that can handle both all of our historical records, and make them accessible, and organize all the ongoing records that we're constantly making to, in fact, to, you know, help us be even better at, best in class, at providing services to our residents by allowing our employees to be more efficient and effective, and to share documents across the platform. So once we have this platform, you know, we all know, for instance, if you work in organizations, there's, there's a shared drive where things get saved, and of course, the township has a shared drive too. And even though we're digital in most things now, yes, there's still a lot of documents that come in, especially large format documents come in, so we're still building the resort, the storage area. But the, this will help also organize all the electronic records that we are, that we're constantly creating, so that they have a structure that allows for more easy use and recall. And since Micro, Laserfish is already, is so widely used in Michigan, it has experience already with integrating with, with the different softwares that we intend to use, which includes the GIS, you know, BSNA, cloud, and New World. So we met, what, was it maybe a month ago, after the, after the demonstrations, and everybody had some feedback and thoughts about it, and, and there was no objection to Laserfish, there was some excitement to Laserfish, and some belief, in fact, that all three of them looked fine, but the Laserfish seemed to come out on top with regard to each of the departments that participated. So that's a little bit of additional background I wanted to add, and I think Danny, you mentioned you had something.
I do, but I'd love them to go first, yeah.
No, I had a question for Mark, just as the contract been reviewed yet?
Contract was reviewed, there was some recommended changes by Dirk, but doesn't need to be held up. You can go ahead and do a motion to approve the proposal and agreement, subject to a township attorney's final approval of the agreement.
Thank you.
Something to that effect, so.
Does anyone else have questions?
We only see in our packet the one proposal cost basis. You said there were 21 bidders, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you tell me the range of costs associated with those 21 bidders?
I can give you general range.
That'd be, yeah, just, so a lot of times people talk about, are we always picking the most, the cheapest contract, or the most expensive contract?
Sure.
You're, as a consultant, are telling us, this is the best contract. So it might not be the cheapest, but it provides us the most robust service that we need for now and the future.
Yeah.
But when we talk about transparent government, I need to know where those.
It's like a comparison table.
Yeah, and a lot of times.
And I think we can absolutely provide that. I did mention, too, is that each proposal had a spectrum of the services offered, and in turn, the pricing that they provided, because there were some assumptions made on how many users, you know, user licenses would be needed, et cetera. And so they really spanned from, I think, on the low end, about $15,000, to the high end, upwards of, I believe it's $350,000. And so it was a very wide span, and some were just totally, you know, you would disregard off the bat, because they were just inaccurate in their, in their assessment of what was needed for the township.
So the final three that you interviewed, what were those ranges?
They were all in the bottom quartile, in terms of being in the cheapest quartile, if I remember correctly. If you don't mind, maybe I can, Bill, do you happen to have that information in front of you, where you can give us exact numbers?
Yeah, you mean the range? I'm having a little trouble hearing, you mean the range of prices?
Yeah, the three selected vendors.
Oh, yes.
Do you have the pricing by chance in front of you? I know the range was wide for all 21, but the three I believe were.
The bid price was 36, 37, and 45. No, 36,000 for file hold, 45 for docuWare, 51 for Laserfish, but that wasn't the act, those were the prices bid for the RFP, but not, not when we had the meeting with them, the interview. The total range of prices in the RFP went up to 697,000. Of course, that was a joke, we didn't take that seriously.
Yeah, thanks, I was having a thought. Yeah, thanks, that was hard on me, though. Does that provide you with the, did we answer your question?
You answered my question. Usually it creates more questions, but I'm going to let some of my other panel members...
Okay. We, all right, anyways, I want to inject.
Anyone else? My question might be a little even bigger than that one, is, I remember back in January, the reason we were doing this was, you're correct, when they did it before, they just scanned, and they didn't do what we needed you to do, which was the hard work in January and February and set everything up. And that was all done, and we got all these other RFPs in May, because our goal again is to get all 200, we put aside $500,000 of ARPA money to get 200 years' worth of documents scanned. And what's scary is none of this involves any of that. This, like, so what was the delay between May, when you got the 21, and I got to see all three? The one was definitely, nobody was interested in the third one. The second one, there was one department that kind, when we finally got to see it, like four or five months later, we saw it, and that person had one Michigan client. So even if they would have been a potential, nobody else in Michigan but Wyandotte had picked them, whereas the other one is well-known, it's used, and it actually understands BSNA. What was the delay between May and October that caused us to derail the 200-year project?
Well, let me try to quickly provide some background of that. This project is a two-step project, which involves identifying the document management system within which all the scanning will, you know, be put into.
Right.
The document management system itself, like, as we're discussing here, Laserfish, is the heart of that. We can't scan or know what to scan, or even how to format the scanning until we know where we're going to put it.
Right, so what...
And that's what we're doing here now.
Yeah, what was the delay to get us to Laserfish? Why did it take four or five months to get us here instead of, like, because I would have expected, we would have picked them by June or July, then we would have worked on the next step, you're correct, step two of, here's who's going to scan, and then we'd have that contract. So I'm wondering, like, was there something extraordinary that happened between May and last month that Laser, were we still not sure that Laserfish was going to be our?
No, not...
What was the delay? I'm just asking.
I just wouldn't call it delay. So what we had was a robust system to engage a lot of people, and I thought that was most important because of the failure of the first round of this project that happened a decade ago before we were all here. And what we need is, is not just the best system, but the best system that all of our folks in the township will embrace, which means getting their involvement in, as much as we can. And when we received over 20 responses back to the RFP, which exceeded more than we ever really thought we could possibly get, it took more time to go through those, and then to provide a reasoned response as to why we got down to the, to the three, and reviewed it then with all the teams in different, in different departments. And if there's any delay, it's the fact that we ran an election in the summer and getting meetings during the summer, during vacations, and all the, all the different demands were with the different departments, because the goal I had was to make sure that everybody was engaged as much as possible, took more time than anticipated.
I definitely feel your pain, because I had to engage the community and all the department heads during all those same times.
Sure.
So I just keep bringing it back. I know we're a little hard on the other consultants, so I just am curious. So knowing that the second choice was so far behind the first choice, and like you said, a lot of those got thrown out, is it normal that, that we would have, like, because we are not technically on time with this project, because now, what I'm hearing tonight is, I have $500,000 of ARPA money that we're not going to talk about tonight.
We will talk about that on the next slide.
So you did pick, so we do have contracts to look at for that?
We will talk about it on the next slide.
Because I, we needed that for the budget meeting on November 11th. Have you engaged, so I know we already, you had talked a couple of weeks ago, you were calling them to get contracts for tonight, were you able to engage them?
What we, what we have is the recommendation with regard to the document management system. And then what will follow after we make a decision on that is a discussion about the strategies concerning the archive legacy documents and how best to move forward, and then we'll have those contracts at the next meeting.
But we have to have the budget before, like, so I have to have the budget in the project, in the board packet before the next meeting. That's why today was kind of the cutoff for all of our ARPA to be included. That's why Jason said if it's not here tonight, we can't consider it in the budget.
That timeline's been reviewed with Jason, and he's comfortable with us making, we'll see the next slide, and we'll go through that.
Because the last I heard from Jason was if it wasn't tonight, we were going to put that $500,000 of ARPA money to general projects, because he couldn't hold it any longer.
Which he needs, he, the plan is to do that when the budget is adopted at the next meeting. So we have between now and when that budget is adopted at the next meeting. And it's a preliminary budget, as you know, at which we're entertaining, you know, one meeting's earlier than normally entertained, so...
No, that's actually a normal meeting.
We're working hard to get it, we're working hard to get it there, and this is the first step to getting, to accomplishing that.
So we're there, again, I'm asking, because this is our first time doing this, you're the best of the best, that's why I picked you.
Thank you.
Is there anything out of the ordinary that happened to cause a four or five month delay?
Well, I actually wanted to confirm the dates, and Bill, maybe you, Bill Safady, if you can hear me, can you confirm the dates of the vendor demonstrations by chance? I don't have them in front of me, apologies, I should.
I can get them while you're talking.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it sounds like you got everybody in May 30th, but we didn't have demonstrations till a couple of weeks ago.
The demonstrations, you're saying?
Yeah, so what was that delay between May to...
Sure, there is definitely the need for a robust analysis of all 21 proposals, because of the detailed nature of each proposal and the differing nature of each proposal, to make sure that I was presenting the information that was informative for the township to make the right decision on who to move to that next phase. DocuWare, who I think you're referring to as a one municipal installation, still has many private installations, so still a very valid potential solution and deserving of consideration.
Yeah.
In addition to that, there was a lot of post-demonstration back and forth Q and A, in making sure that it could properly integrate with systems like BSNA. And so our conversations post-demonstration with, as Martin knows, with companies like Laserfish and Filehold and others was to really understand, to what level do they truly integrate? Is it a true integration? Is it an API key? How would the documents be retrieved as they do? As, how compatible are they with these different applications currently utilized? But also the utilization of future applications, as Will knows, going to BSNA Cloud. And so how are these vendors prepared to take it to that next generation, as I talk about, not just solving for today's needs, but the future needs? And I would say there's, there's a fair amount of due diligence that goes into that process in making sure you're making the right selection. And then moving forward with Laserfish, making sure that we're assigning the right number of users for the township's needs, who actually needs user access, who just needs, you know, what we call restricted access, and making sure that we're presenting an appropriate budget ultimately to be, to be presented. And Bill, were you able to confirm the dates for the demonstrations by chance?
Yes, Laserfish was September 10, September 12, DocuWare, and September 16 was Filehold. I will note that before we got to this point, there was a lot of discussion among ourselves about the 21 proposals. We couldn't just dismiss 21 proposals out of hand or review them in a day or two.
Oh, no. I'm just worried about the four months.
And there were some good proposals, they were just on the ballpark for price, many of them. We wanted to be sure, we wanted to be sure that we weren't ruling out a viable candidate only on the basis of price. So we looked at all of these very closely, talked about them with Martin, came back, analyzed them again, repeated that process till we got to the point where we had the shortlist.
Okay.
Did we answer some of your questions?
But I think we'll just move on. It sounds like it just kind of...
We can certainly provide a timeline too, in follow-up. I know that doesn't help for tonight's meeting, but we can certainly do that.
Because now I'd be worried of how long it takes for the next step, just because four months of any project, like, they had to engage in engineer designs and everything, and they don't usually take that long. So it makes me nervous about the next step of how long it'll be till we get to the next step.
Sure.
Well, maybe we can answer that when we start discussing on the next slide.
Okay.
So before we get there, actually, though, Sean, I do want to resolve, go back on this slide then. Oh, no.
Sorry.
I, unless there's any other questions or comments, I mean, Laserfish is the recommended vendor for a document management system that'll house all of our electronic records. And unless there's any questions, I do have a motion I could read to do that.
Do one more question, sorry, Martin.
Yes, sir.
So just to confirm, not only are we going to be approving this initial cost, there is an ongoing support fee of approximately $65,000 estimated, right?
Right.
So in terms of what the other ones were offering, is that normal for the ballpark? Again, just because I didn't get to see the other ones, the top three, is that a normal cost for this type of support?
The directive would be yes, I would say, absolutely.
That's, that's also going to include your license fees. It's actually, I went back with an email on him a couple of days ago, and my concern was that we had license fees plus support. That support is including your license fees, so if you look at the, I think it's at the beginning of that table, there's a license fee there for just under that 64, and then they're including an approximate, and I think an approximate 5% increase. So they have license fees at 70 users at $63,000, and then year two at 64, 740. So that, that's where that repeat cost comes in. So unfortunately, that's the way with most softwares nowadays, it's, you only owe them for a year.
I'm trying to understand, at the scope of this level, is that what we should expect? Is that what's standard? That's all?
Yep, yep.
I'm actually going to stick up for Laserfish at this point, is even if, even if that is a little higher, literally the next best contender has one client in the state of Michigan and doesn't work with BSNA, which is, although great with private world, we live in BSNA. So I got to tell you, it would cost a lot of time and for them to even get caught up to where, so I was okay with the Laserfish cost, because they're really, again, you're paying for the best of the best.
They're the best.
Yeah, they're, like, the only real option.
And that's, again, just as we discuss and making sure we've had it, understanding all the great things that Martin's talking about, it's making sure we understand the costs, and that's all, that's all.
The compatibility with BSNA is huge.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so they're, they're currently have an API into BSNA, and then also with our ongoing RGIS project, they're already integrated fully with that, right into Laserfish. Again, that brings more files, really online to most of our infrastructure and statutory requirements, which we had kind of talked about in the last year of moving that into, into not only an efficiency, you know, place where our employees could be more efficient and have workflows, but in case of a disaster, all of those workflows, all of those files, and every other statutory requirement in that kind of IT side is, is available to us.
Any other questions? So the intention here is to use some ARPA funds for this project, and there is an ongoing subscription fee, and the fee is driven in large part by the number of users. We came to the number of users by getting input from each department head as to the number, they needed full users and partial users, and that happened in the last couple of weeks to come up with that number, so we could get a solid number to put down for, you know, for the board to discuss.
Perfect, thank you.
So the motion I want to make or to offer is to approve contracting with ICC CDS for the Laserfish Content Management System Cloud, starting for the 2025 calendar year and continuing on a subscription basis, and for implementation support and workflow development hours for the 2025-26 period for, for a total amount of $180,750, subject to legal and administrative reviews and approvals of the contract. $100,000 of which would be allocated from ARPA funds to be expended in the 2025 calendar year.
Support. My clerk, Brooks, support by trustee Burnett, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose, that passes.
Okay, cool. Now, part two. So go ahead.
Okay, part two. So to the earlier point of what would be the next phase of this particular engagement is the scanning of the physical records, the archival paper records and any incoming paper records, especially those with permanent retention requirements to an electronic form, really to solve for key issues like spatial requirements and create new efficiencies and obviously the storage of these records and the retrieval of these records, ultimately enhancing compliance for things like FOIA requests. As the volume of records continues to grow, the challenges of both space and retrievability, organization, time to execution, all become more complex. And so there's certainly benefits to considering the scanning of paper records. You can see we've outlined just some of the baseline benefits here on this slide, enhance compliance, creating new efficiencies, but also the key element of redundancy planning, whereas right now, everything is stored, for the most part, on-premise in physical form, really opening it up to particular risks like a climate event. And so by digitizing and storing in a cloud capacity, you obviously have business continuity or redundancy backup. Four quotes I know have been obtained by Martin and team for different phases of implementation. And we've outlined some of the different options for implementation here. The first is a consideration of a full digital conversion, essentially scanning everything you have and uploading it to Laserfish. Laserfish absolutely has that capability to accept all of these digital records, and most importantly, can store them in organized fashion so that they can be retrieved when called upon. What we find is that most organizations are surprised at the total costs and the time associated with a full document conversion process. And I know that some of the bids were upwards of, I believe, north of over $400,000.
One was 600.
600,000, yeah. So with that said, other options can be considered, and some of the more popular options we see are an off-site, a commercial off-site storage arrangement where you utilize a scan-on-demand program. And what a scan-on-demand program is really a, a scan-as-needed program. And so you have the ability to request a particular file, record, drawing, et cetera, and it's scanned at that time into digital form. That digital record is now stored within your document management software solution, making it available for, really in perpetuity, until it's permanently deleted. The benefits of that type of program is that you're only paying to scan those records that are truly active, and not paying to scan records that are inactive, never to be retrieved. And additional benefits in a, in a normal environment, without maybe the consideration of grant funding, is the spreading of cost over a longer period of time. The third option, and one that could be certainly considered, is a hybrid approach, scanning those records that are certainly candidates to be immediately digitized, so you can think permanent retention required documents that you know are actively retrieved or retrieved often by multiple parties, and also records that may be in a damaged state, that you need to preserve immediately in a digital form. So you can identify those records for immediate digitization and send the remainder, those that are really inactive, not actively utilized, to an off-site storage arrangement and the utilization of scan-on-demand. We certainly think all of these implementation options are valid. Again, the full digital conversion can be costly, certainly a long period of time to convert hundreds of thousands of records, and also may involve the conversion of records, again, that will never be retrieved at any point. And you still face the challenge of the organization of all of these digital records, making sure they're properly tagged for easy retrieve, retrievability into the future. So the four, the four vendors that were, that were tapped for a quote are all, we're very familiar with them, all of them provide great, a great process for digitization, and can really help along the full scope of this particular project. And it's now, obviously, we don't have those here for proposal tonight, but will be going to, are being evaluated right now, depending on which approach or path is most appropriate for the township in this, for their archival records due to the total volume that currently exists.
So, thank you. And adding to that a little bit, we did some additional investigations, so not only is there the storage records here, the building department is always going to be collecting or receiving paper documents of a large format. Some of those can be received electronically, but, so there's going to be a need for transitioning paper records into digital format ongoing, because we'll be creating new ones. And the, there are significant numbers of documents also in the engineering area that could be scanned, so not, not simply the storage... that could be scanned, so not, not simply the storage area, but engineering as well, that was considered by the providers when looking at the, you know, the different solutions. The, the price ranges for, you know, scanning all of these documents and making them electronic was from roughly four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand above. So we're talking, you know, at the very low end, somewhere between four hundred thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A two-year project, they would, it would take them all of the next two years to, to complete all of that scanning. And discussing all the different kinds of options to solve this. So that, you know, the goal is to, is to preserve our records. These are all records that be retained in perpetuity, to also preserve them so they do not degrade any further. Our storage area is, is not conducive to protecting the documents long-term. And then making them readily available for folks that need them. Community members that ask for copies of plans or documents and, or FOIA requests. And, and so to be responsive to that. And then lastly, of course, the, the needs that staff have to review historical records to understand how best to make, you know, because history informs the, the current and future decision-making. And there was a lot of ways to skin that cat. You know, in my mind, I've been thinking, scan, scan, scans. But I wanted to bring back to the board the idea that there is another possible option. And what made me, you know, when we're discussing this, why I thought it was important for a board level to conversations is because, for instance, the scanning solution starts at around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A storage off-site in an environmentally controlled location where they scan on demand, so in other words, building department would say, well, I need X record. And it would be within a short period of time retrieved by the off-site vendor and scanned and sent electronically to the building department. That that could, that is, we've received, we've received one quote already. And many of the vendors do both, they can have, they have both solutions. And that's about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So it made my eyebrows rise a little bit. And I thought, wait a minute, for fifteen thousand dollars a year, we can potentially achieve the goals that we have versus, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to scan it, which also achieve the goals we're seeking. And which approach is best? And this is kind of a, this is a financial decision. I mean, fifteen thousand dollars, we, we could, that's like a thirty-year payback compared to the cost upfront to scan them all. Important too to be considered is the idea that we scan them using ARPA funds, whereas the ongoing cost of, of storage and retrieval is a budget, a budgetary amount. Jason and I discussed that today, he's comfortable with, you know, that kind of a number and budgeting that into the, into future budgets. But that's, that's, you know, kind of where we're at. And then, of course, there's the hybrid solution where, where some things could be scanned, especially the ones that are degraded more seriously. The last tidbit of information too I want to pass around along in helping to make this decision and provide information to the board to consider is I talked with, you know, accounting and building and fire and engineering and, and DPW and senior center and all the departments and asked how often do they go to, to the building, to the storage site to retrieve documents? And it's, it's not, it's hardly ever. Building said that they go once a week. The engineering, three to five times a month, so about the same, once a week. You know, senior center, none, DPW, maybe once a week. Accounting, a handful of times a year. So the records are there, we're required to keep them. So we must expend some ti, some resources to, to maintain them. But as far as, you know, the, the times that are actually being accessed, it's, it's actually surprisingly low. So.
How often did building and planning tell you? Because it's a little different than what Patty told me. Because Patty had, when we originally started this, well, one, you have the historical documents that you were excited to show us eighteen twenty-seven. Of course, they're not going to be a FOIA thing, but then they're also no longer scanned in and preserved.
They've been scanned already, they, they are.
Some of them, yes, yes. But as you've pointed out, there's two hundred years worth, hundreds of thousands of documents that are. But also, this concept actually started in the building and planning department. It got moved to a board level, but Patty's team had to actually hire somebody just for FOIAs. Most of what this one person does is just constantly, and then there were stacks and stacks where she didn't even have time to put back what she'd already looked at. And the goal was to get things easier for FOIAs, as well as when we're looking at things, we find, even there was an engineering issue that nobody knew there was a document that we actually did have access to, that this poor man has, has had an easement that we thought, I think, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he finally came in to show us paperwork that we should have had access to. But it was from like the seventies or the eighties. So again, it's not often, but when you need it, it's a shame that that man had to spend like eight to ten years fighting us to get this document accessed. So this whole concept started with that. And the fear is, and we knew it was expensive, we put five hundred thousand dollars out there. So again, that fear is knowing what the board direction was of five hundred thousand dollar scanning, when, was it just in the last week that it changed? Or did you know for a while that you weren't suggesting this, like?
Nothing has changed. What we're talking about is the options to solve the problem you just described. It's a legitimate problem that needs solving. But there is more than one way to, to solve that. And the financial implications, I thought, were serious enough that we should have this conversation about it.
Okay. And it just came up this week, like you didn't know about this a few months ago to tell us a heads-up? Like, hey, maybe there's other options before October twenty-eighth?
We've discussed these scanning options in the past, but all the quotes that were requested were for a full digital conversion. So to your point, it's in line with what was always discussed.
Okay, so this is more of just a recent switch? Would it, would it make sense to do more of like a hybrid for the, the two or three departments that tend to have more of a use? That's what we thought, that's where I thought this was going, but it sounds like it's now changed a little bit.
Well, there's, I think, a very interesting question about whether or not we spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now to scan everything when it appears those very, actually very little use. We do have the money versus another option, which also solves the problem with a thirty-year, almost a thirty-year payback.
So I just have a question, with the store off-site scanning on demand, so the example that supervisor Walsh is bringing up with the FOIAs. In theory, then they could just go, but then I guess.
You have to know it exists. Yeah, if you can't digitally search for something, really it's what we have now for the future, which is great. Again, I love that we're getting something for the future, but it's really a version of what we have now, which is if we realize we should have had something, we scan it in. But you don't know what you have if you don't know what you have.
So both, both solutions require collaboration with the vendor and, and the township to ensure that it's good quality information in, so we can get good quality information out. Both of them will, will require that, that additional effort on, on behalf of both.
And Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, part of that process, both numbers, the store off-site and hybrid, they were going to index everything that was in central storage or engineering and DPW. So we would have a, a database or a place to look to see if that document does exist. And then it would be digitized if it was requested. So if, if one of those two options was, was to be chosen.
So somebody has to look at all the, all the documents anyway. But they just don't scan them in.
They index them, so for example, like in a hybrid option, you may index your decaying documents, may index your large format building plans, very smaller, like bank box documents. Those would be indexed in that bank box and before they were put into the, into the storage.
Typically in a off-site storage with a scan-on-demand solution program, the indexing is done on like a general contents description of a particular box. So say if it was an accounting file, it may be date range for AR, you know, accounts receivable invoicing or something along those lines. So the, the contents of that box are generally, generally captured. And/or what's utilized is whatever internal records management program exists, to your point, to go retrieve your records from your onsite storage currently. That same information would be captured for this retrieval program. So to Martin's point, the quality of its current condition will certainly dictate the quality of the output or the reliability of retrievals based on the information and how it's recorded today. That's certainly true. And I do want to, Bill, Bill Safati, can you hear me okay?
I hear you, Taylor.
I just wanted to see if you had any additional notes as to the, to the discussed options in the context of the, the total spend?
I think they're outlined, outlined pretty well. It's a question of paying to scan something that will never be looked at again. And we say a thirty-year payback, that has no payback, it has no benefit. There are some records that, that the township can identify, that it wants to scan for reasons of preservation or to make them available. Engineering drawings would fall into that category. For the other things, it might make more sense to just put them off-site and have them scanned when they are requested. Anything that hasn't been requested in ten years hasn't been looked at in ten years. Anything that hasn't been requested in twenty years hasn't been looked at in twenty years. A thirty-year payback is really pretty risky, because if you think backwards, we're not doing anything today that was done thirty years ago. And who knows what we'll be doing thirty years from now? We might be putting money into scanning things that won't meet our needs or that, that we can't effectively utilize. Also, we note that scanning is no guarantee that you can retrieve the thing. It just means it'll be digital. So it doesn't necessarily help us to find it. You know, it's something that has to be, has to be evaluated by the township in terms of the total cost in relation to the benefits. I think the payback is probably on the order of twenty-five to thirty years, maybe per scanning. Maybe a little longer when you consider the time value of money.
I, I think that's what's actually freaking me out is the concept of this was, ARPA is do projects that you normally wouldn't do because they're so expensive and, but here's some money to do it, verse locking this township into a thirty-year contract with something that ten years from now may be obsolete. That's, that's a budget item we'd be stuck with for thirty years. That's just, ARPA, the whole concept of ARPA was no recurring costs. It's supposed to be projects that you would love to do if you had the free money there. And this is just, it's scaring me that you're locking us into a thirty-year contract.
So there's cost going forward in either approach. The digitization isn't the end of it, because that, that information has to be stored. And there's cost of storage and cost of retrieval associated with that. So within Laserfish, what, an additional terabyte of data, and we really at this point, it's like an underground water main project. We actually do not know how much is over there as far as data goes. But one terabyte of data is three thousand dollars a year in Laserfish, on top of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to scan it. And so we're looking at, trying to make the best decision long-term, as you, as you've indicated. We want something, we make sure that's the right solution, not just tomorrow, but thirty years from now. And I'm, you know, either one can, can work. You know, I, I know that Will, you've had some conversations with different department heads about the different solutions and I don't know if you've got some thoughts about that?
Yeah, it was actually kind of, I was, it was surprising speaking with Patty. I kind of expected for them to be back and forth all day. And she was, she was the one that came back and said about once a week. And I think what the, what the difference was is they actually build up a lot in their, in their, in their building department. So then Kim goes over there, and I can't remember if it's once a month, but I don't think it's any more, any more frequent than that, where she actually takes the new documents over and then they do a yearly project where they bring, bring everything over to the central storage, which, you know, it's, it's to consider, you know, that, that, just to go back a little bit, that's a non-climate controlled room. There is, we, we don't control pests or anything like that in that room necessarily. You know, you may not know there, what's in that room. And we're at the point now, if you look at the documents, they're almost to the ceiling, you know, all the way across. It is a little bit of urgency there. But and speaking of the other departments, they really didn't go there as often as I thought they did. I personally have only been in that room maybe four or five times in my life, just to stay used to it, but to see where, what was in there and things like that. But most of it's going there and just sitting there. And that was a little bit surprising to me. And, and I think that's where these, the options two or three came up. And to Martin's point, if, if we are talking about five hundred thousand dollars and, and we have and we think it's a good idea to spend it on a full conversion, then we could do that. But I think it is a, a due diligence thing to look at, you know, maybe there are other options that have maybe a long, a, a payback that would take, take a little bit longer to get there. But, you know, when it, but when it comes to Jason's, Jason's department, I'll let him speak to that, but.
Could we do Val's idea of, for the ones that we know want it, like building and planning, do the full? And I just don't like the thirty-year, but do something shorter term with the others going forward?
Well, I think that's where the hybrid would really come in.
Can I ask a question, I'm sorry? Something that Bill said kind of struck with me. He said, because it has been digitized, doesn't mean it can be retrieved.
You can find it.
Right, did he, did I hear that correctly?
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
What does that mean?
What is that, why are we paying to digitize something if it cannot be retrieved?
It shouldn't be indexed so that we can retrieve it?
Difficult to find it?
It depends on how it's indexed and the metadata that's assigned to it. And the bids all include a certain number of metadata tags essentially. And you're relying on the scanning partner to properly tag each particular document, although they may not be as familiar with these documents as, say, you all might be. And so the way in which you might retrieve a document might be a little bit different than how it ends up being formally tagged for retrieval. And I know that Bill brought it up. And Bill, would you add anything to that in terms of the challenges of retrieving, retrieving digital versions of the physical records?
Yeah, my, you're exactly correct. Many people are disappointed to learn that, that there's no perfect retrieval system. That even if the indexing were perfect, the retriever's knowledge wouldn't be perfect. So I think we could, you could certainly do better with documents that are indexed, but would never do perfect. I think they should forget that, that digitization is a solution, but it's not the perfect solution. There's another thing here, another area of risk that wasn't brought up. And, and we encountered this in every, every installation where there's a large collection of documents in the past. We don't have any idea how many drawings there are. We don't have any idea how many paper documents there are, documents in boxes. The, the estimates we've had may turn out to be conservative in cost.
And nobody's gone to get a look? You mean in the, since January, nobody's gone to get a, like a ballpark of it?
Yeah, they have, they have ballparks, but I think your, your ballparks right now are upper several hundred thousands to nearly two million at times. So there's a, there's a huge, there's a huge thing because we don't know necessarily how many documents are each box or how many pages are in that roll of a tube. So they're, I mean, they're, they're relying on their experience. But I think that's, the bill's point is you can't get down to, I mean, they could be, you know, they may be fifty thousand off, they may be two hundred thousand off or, or somewhere around there. But you walk in.
We never know how many documents there are on these jobs. It's just not possible to know, there's always an element of risk. The bigger the collection of documents, the greater the uncertainty.
Each of the scanning vendors have been in the room and looked at it and used their professional judgment to come up with an estimate. We have a, an index which we shared with them as well.
My concern too is that even if some of these documents aren't used, it sounds like many of them may not be. But just by keeping them in storage for all these years, they're going to deteriorate, be damaged. And I thought part of this project was to hopefully make sure that, that, that didn't happen, to protect against that. So that's kind of my concern.
I had another question that again struck my ear as a finance person. We're talking about a thirty-year payback with time value of money. Could someone explain to me what the payback is here that you're talking about?
So let's just say, maybe payback's the wrong word or it evens out. So if I'm going to say, let's say we're going to say spend five hundred thousand to scan these documents today. If we were going to spend fifteen thousand dollars per year and then scan them on demand, it's about thirty-three and a third years to get that equal amount, not, not including inflation or time or anything like that. If you just took just the numbers, spend fifteen thousand dollars.
But after thirty years that we. But after 30 years that we had paid the $15,000 a year, if a document wasn't requested, it would not be scanned. So after that 30 years, we would not have a...
Correct.
A full trove of documents.
Correct.
As opposed to the first example where we paid the $500,000, where we get a full trove of documents.
Right, but you do pay storage fees when you do...
And then you pay the storage fees there, so...
So there is, those right now are estimated, I mean, the current, we're basing on what we scanned, like Martin said, about a decade ago. We are planning on bringing what's already scanned over into Laserfish, that's about $3,000 a year. We're estimating these ones to be probably, that was only really that clerk's area. There was some documents back there, but I would estimate that this will be three times that, two to three times that amount of documents. So we may be in that $9,000 a year range.
So at the end of 30 years, though, you won't actually have all your documents? So you're paying for 30 years?
I hope not, because I've only had a lot of requests.
Right, that's what I mean, so we would be paying out for 30 years. We wouldn't necessarily have all our documents, and God forbid a tornado or anything comes where they're stored. You could lose something in the meantime of those 30 years where the climate may have taken care of a building.
What's our retention requirement? Do we have to have these documents?
These are permanent.
They're all over the place.
Let's talk about the permanent records, the ones that are over there.
We have to keep these?
Yes, yes.
Forever.
If we have to keep them, why are we scanning them?
That, well, that's what I'm asking, that's why I'm asking, because I got shocked by that.
Absolutely can, but just wanted to be clear, the solution was, we've described what the goal is. There's just more than one way to skin that cat, and we hadn't, as a board, discussed it, so we're having a discussion.
Yeah, because I see issues where, you know, if they're just, I mean, I worked in a school, and we had a lot of paper records, and, you know, it's like you're piling these paper records. If there's a humidity issue, a roof leak, a flood, paper ages, different printing techniques hold up differently. So if they're not going to be protected by us just piling them in this room, and we need to keep them, then I think we should scan them all.
They would be protected by the, they wouldn't be in that room. That was, our goal, no matter what, is to get them out of that room, so...
Yeah, they would be in a, when I'm in a building...
Whether they're in a hybrid solution or a storage solution, then you're in a secure environment.
It's somebody else's building that may get hit by a tornado, that's what I'm saying. Like, in 30 years, if there's a chance that something happens to that building, yeah.
So, again, I actually want to thank Martin for bringing these options up to us, because, again, we talked about being fiscally conservative, we just talked about, and our strategic plan is talking about that, and he's bringing forth other options to us. Whether the board decides to do that or not, in some sense, is kind of irrelevant to the exercise of us talking about it, talking out why we want to make this investment, or how we want to change those dollars, right? So I really appreciate us talking about this, because this is what we just signed up to do, literally two steps ago, and now we're implementing it now, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So our goal from this conversation was to get the sense of where we are, and then we would move forward to the next step. So, and which is to bring a proposal to the board at the next meeting, which would allow us to still use ARPA funds on the schedule that we have to work with. And I guess what I'm hearing is that people prefer the scanning methodology.
I think scanning and a hybrid option with very strategic planning of which departments were almost all scanning. So again, like you mentioned, maybe the fire department would not be one where we're going to spend as much utilized, because they're not utilizing it, or some of the other departments, where building and planning, obviously clerks, making sure we migrate that over, some of those departments. So I'd be interested in hearing both, to understand the pros and cons, but I don't see the scan-on-demand program being the best plan for us. But thank you for bringing it forward to us.
Great. So we'll work on, I think I'm hearing, is a full digital conversion with, but broken out into a hybrid approach. The goal is all of them eventually, but we're going to start with the most important ones. Building plans, plans of historical importance, you know, engineering plans, and then working down the route, again, only focusing on the permanent retention. So the ones that are going to be destroyed in five or seven years wouldn't be digitized at all. They would stay there and just, and live out the rest of their natural life. But then going forward, all the permanent records would be scanned, and/or retrieved electronically and saved in Laserfish.
There's actually going to, just to expand a little bit, so with the workflows of Laserfish, I don't want to go backwards in the Laserfish conversation, but with the workflows and everything else, with like Corey's projects for engineering, for example, when you bring new documents in, they will be scanned right when they come in. Whether they're going to be for permanent storage, that's part of Laserfish, that's part of what the software does, is I can assign, like, we're only going to keep this document for five years, and when that document expires, whoever's responsible for that document now is, it gets an alert that you need to go remove that document from the system. So anything, once we get to a point where, either it's, you know, where we bring all the files in, or we bring each department in, there's going to be a process, we're going to continue to go forward. So as things come in, as plans come in, the building plans, there could be delays. We'll have to outsource large documents, like a building plan, to have large format scanned. But as eight-and-a-half-by-elevens and that come in, they'll immediately go to Laserfish. So that would be, that room would never get, you know, we won't have as many files, or hopefully very little, going out to an uncontrolled environment.
But as part of that document process, if they fall off, they would get deleted from our servers, and then we wouldn't be paying for that storage anymore, right?
Correct.
They'd be falling off over time.
Yeah, we want to, because right now, like you said, we may have documents out there that expired 25 years ago. We don't want to keep those when we're paying, whether I'm paying to keep them in that room, or if I'm paying to keep them in the computer system, we just don't want to pay to keep them anymore.
Correct.
Okay, so thanks for the conversation and information, and we'll see you on this topic at the next meeting.
Thanks, Martin.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have considering approval of bid of two tandem axle swap loaders with winter equipment, and we have Public Works Manager, Adam Roos.
For the 2025-2026 fiscal year, the Department of Public Works budgeted, or planned to budget, $1 million to purchase two new tandem axle swap loader trucks. Reason is planned, obviously, like fire trucks, vocational trucks have a long lead time. So you have to plan to buy it in one year, take delivery in the next year. And the term swap loader might sound a little bit new.
Yeah, it's really cool. I had no idea what it was.
So it allows us to have a lot more versatility in the fleet, because essentially it's a truck chassis with a big hook that you can put various attachments on. So we're not pinned down, even in future years, we can pick various attachments. As different operations change, it keeps us flexible.
Can you explain how like a winter truck, a truck can be used in winter and summer now because of the attachment? Because I didn't know what this was.
Yeah, so we can put a V-box on it, which can hold salt and liquid application in the winter, and then in the summertime, it can haul asphalt, you can have a chipper box, all kinds of different things. Pretty much, I think there's like 13 different applications you can use for those trucks.
So it lets you have a more robust fleet, that one truck doesn't sit there when there's no snow on the ground?
Right. So on June 20th, we published a request for bid on Mitten, and we received two bids. One was for, from Proper Performance LLC, for $485,000, which was well above market pricing. And the other was for Wolverine Truck Group. And this is just for the truck chassis. The upfitting would be through the Rochester Hills Purchase Consortium, and that was in the amount of $310,000 and $387 per truck. And the total would be $456,345, which puts the total for each truck, $43,654, under what would be the potential budget for those. So we recommend that Wolverine Truck Group be awarded the contract to build the chassis, which then we would receive around May. And Truck and Trailer Specialties receive the bid through the purchasing consortium in the amount of $310,387.50 per truck.
Any other questions?
A couple, do we have any of these current trucks now with that?
We don't. What we've done is we've observed other communities. Farmington Hills is a big one, they've been using them for about 15 years almost. And they have an extremely flexible fleet because of that. And what they did is they kind of pioneered the liquid application, which helps cut down on environmental impact, the amount of salt you have to use, because you can pre-treat with a brine, which is a more direct to melting, because you're skipping the whole salt turning into water phase, you're just directly applying it. And they've had awesome results with not only swap loader, but the liquid application. So we're trying to move in that direction, and this really kind of catapults us into getting where we need to be quickly with that.
Does this allow us multiple swaps with that? Are we going to get the V in a regular box, or how many boxes are we getting?
Yeah, so for that 300 and...
10,000.
Yeah, so that gives us, I think it was four attachments per truck. Gives us a V-box, a liquid tank. So basically, one driver in the morning could start out with a liquid tank, put direct application on to kind of hold it over for the evening, and then that same driver can switch over, put the V-box on, by the operator, just one operator doing it, because it has a camera system that allows everything to be controlled from the cab.
So he'll be able to dump off on his own and then grab the next one?
Correct. And usually it requires concrete pads, we already have that at our facility, so we wouldn't even have to...
To store all the different attachments?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to support this, I think this is a great idea.
Motion by trustee Kalinski, second by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So we have Adam again to consider approval to purchase one sewer jet.
Okay, and similar to both fire trucks and vocational trucks, long lead times. We're looking at very similar lead time with a sewer jet, which is a critical vehicle for our operations, not only mandatory operations for cleaning, but emergency operations too. So what we did is we brought in, there's three different distinct models in the industry. We brought them in for our staff to really dig into them, take a look at them, what would suit them best as far as what our operations are. And what they chose is the 900 Eco 12-yard truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner by Sewer Equipment of America. And Paul's not here, but he also has a lot of experience with that specific model, and he says it's the best in the industry. And that would be through, the purchasing would be through Sourcewell Purchasing Consortium. And we originally had, or planned to budget $800,000 for this vehicle, and the total amount came in at $590,963.14. So we're recommending that we move forward with purchasing the Sewer Equipment, Sewer Equipment of America Sewer Jet.
How long do one of these trucks normally last?
Well, the one we're replacing is a 2009, but really, the industry standard is to stay on about 10 years is the cap of what you want to go for.
Yeah, I just, that's what I was getting at, is that we've actually been putting this purchase off for years, trying to, you know, push out some of our capital improvements, because we have a great fleet mechanic, and they've been able to kind of keep this trucking along. But eventually get to a point where it becomes so fiscally, not the smart plan to continue to invest money in something like this, and go to the new technology. So I appreciate us being able to put it off, when we need to invest money, we invest money. So thank you for that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve, there's no more questions.
Support.
motion by trustee Murray, supported by trustee Kalinski, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next we have consider award of the Bloomfield Township Stormwater Sewer System Rehabilitation Project Contract.
Nope, that's a couple later.
Oh, I skipped over you, sorry. Consider approval for the replacement of the senior center parking lot. Sorry.
No worries. Really quickly, just wanted to give you an idea, oh, good evening, everyone, good to be here.
Good evening.
Thanks for making it, I'll make this short. Wanted to give you some ideas of the current condition out there. We've received a lot of complaints over the years, a lot of requests by the senior center staff to address the condition of this parking lot. The pictures actually do it justice. There's about two inches of pavement missing down in that area where the photograph looks the worst there, and you can see where the line's disappearing. Groundwater's the main culprit here. And then additionally, we have some groundwater, or some stormwater assets under the parking lot that ballooned the cost due to a regulation change that we went through recently, and I'll explain that. So here you can see, these are conditional photos last Thursday out there, and I didn't have to embellish, they do look pretty bad, and the pavement is failing in multiple spots, and it's also failing in a way that we can't patch it. Where you can see the alligatoring up in the upper left, you're actually losing two, three inches of pavement in these areas, so. So there were new stormwater standards that pushed this project, I think they're a 20-year storm event right now from the county, they doubled the stormwater standards.
100, it went from a 10-year to a 100-year.
Okay, so, when this facility was built, it was a 10-year rain event that you built for, and now they're building for a 100-year rain event, because they've increased the standards, and we've seen flooding, right, 2021, 2023, knock on wood, hopefully that's it. But these standards, we have to comply with them when you do a major upgrade of the parking lot. So that just, I don't know if you know, there's a large cement containment system underneath the parking lot already, that has to be upsized for the bigger rain event. So that obviously is a lot of cost, as compared to just ripping out a parking lot. Two-month project, spring 2025 timeline, we coordinated heavily with the senior center. It's obviously a high-traffic area. We had engineers go back to the drawing board for egress and ingress to the site. We're going to make sure that remains off of Andover, and basically wig-wag back and forth across their entrance. It's double-wide right now. That's some extra cost, but that's what has to be done, rather than bringing them in from the courthouse, that type of stuff, so. So major coordination with the senior center in that way. They're bid out on Mitten, we got six bids back for the project. TNM Asphalt is the low bidder and recommended contractor, HRC and township staff vetted the bidders, and everything was satisfactory there. The letter from HRC is in there with the bid tab of the top three. So then I have the recommendation to award the contract for the senior center parking lot replacement in the amount of $939,980 even, except that, and this are the caveats for if we have over, construction costs come in over, right? And we'll have the ability with our township engineer to approve anything of a 10% increase within the DPW. Then between 10 and 30% is the approval of the township supervisor. If it comes in over 30%, then we'll come back to you as the board. We don't expect that in this project. It's a pretty cut-and-dry project, but we did include those caps in there, as was customary with the other projects that engineering was doing.
Is this 30 instead of 15 because it's water sewer-related? Or, because normally if it's water sewer, we do 30, and if it's not, we do...
No, if we want to, I pulled this language from engineering, not having made that connection of the, I didn't even know there was a 10 to 15.
Normally we talk about 15%, because we're talking about a $300,000 latitude, that would be...
I'm comfortable with going down.
Yeah, and I don't think it's going to go over even our 10% that we're allowed to. So I think I'm very comfortable with this project coming in as bid, so.
The only time I think we do 30 is with water sewer, you don't know what you don't know.
That's fine, yeah, and I got the language from them, so I, my mistake. So between 10 and 15% would be the discretion of the township supervisor, and then anything over 15% would be, come back to the board. Additionally, I want to note that this is, will be allocated on ARPA funds, and it's, there's a little, so the way it was explained to me from Jason, if you over-allocate the funds and then you don't spend them on a given project, you lose those funds, and you don't have the ability to reallocate them. So if you look, the engineering costs, if you add those in to the construction costs that I just showed you, that's more than a million dollars, but there's some contingency in there, and we didn't want to lose the allocation of the funding, so that's why we're going to allocate the million dollars. We believe that will cover the engineering minus the contingencies, but we didn't want to risk losing that funding, so.
Well, this also, when we noticed there was an issue in the parking lot in '21, when we had all those sinkholes happening, will this address that erosion issue as well?
Yeah, the sinkholes were a pipe failure on the other end of the parking lot, what's really causing, and there is no failure, that kind of missed our parking lot, due to the angle that it came through and went down between the buildings. What's really, the failures are on this far west end, and that's where we see the groundwater expressing itself in there, so. But all of it will be dug up, and if there's any voids or anything, that will be fixed during this. That might be a situation where we come back if there's a major void, or a collapsed pipe, or something of that nature, so.
Anybody have any questions for Noah?
Sorry, I do.
Please.
What is our normal, what should be the normal timeframe we should have an asphalt parking lot? Because this is, 2009 is when this parking lot was done, right? And now it has to be completely redone, down to the base and down to the underground to redo.
Yeah, I think the senior center opened a few years... Yeah, I think the senior center opened a few years earlier than 2009. That was when everything came to be. But typically, 20, 25 years, it is the underlying ground conditions and the groundwater that's expressing itself here that caused the premature failure of the asphalt. So it did fail quicker than expected due to the groundwater. If you, then you're going to have that groundwater sitting there, you have more freeze-and-thaw cycles because of that. We are addressing that groundwater with edge drain and with our, through our engineers as well.
Which is additional stuff that we're engineering on this plan, that we didn't do in 2009 or seven, whatever it is.
Correct.
Because, again, I don't want to have to spend a million dollars on something that's supposed to last 25 years and last 15 years.
Yes, we are.
I'd rather spend more now, so we don't have to do it in the future.
Me, too.
So that, I want to make sure that we're very clear.
We're doing it right, yes. And additionally, when we rebuild Andover Road, going down through, there's, we're on top of a river here. I mean, the lakes that are above us, up the road here, are forty, fifty feet higher than the bottom of the hill down at campus. Groundwater is flowing out of those hills all the time, so groundwater must be managed on this site, so.
Perfect.
Let's make a motion.
Sure.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barnett, supported by Trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
So next, we have Director Almas. So we have consider award of the Bloomfield Township Stormwater System Rehabilitation Project Contract.
Danny, just to confirm.
Oh, wait, do we have to actually?
Is that going to be with the 15% cap, Noah?
In his motion, did it say use ARPA?
Are you good with that, Danny?
Yes.
Perfect.
It does say, shall be allocated our funds.
Okay, perfect. All right, Corey.
Good evening, board. Initially headed as agenda item number 10, but I got bounced on.
He's not bitter at all, Adam.
No, no.
I will say, the friendship that you three have is highly entertaining.
All right, good evening, board. This is for the 2024 Bloomfield Township Stormwater System Rehab Project Contract Award. So just a, just a quick history here. Back in 2021, the major storm events caused flooding of roads and property throughout the township. During this time, it was discovered that the township was conveyed ownership of multiple storm sewer systems and basins. In 2022, Bloomfield Township collaborated with HRC to develop a stormwater asset management plan and assess the township-owned stormwater systems. Through that, we've identified Phase One of the project overview, which included 23 locations, 5,000 feet of sewer cleaning and televising, 2,700 feet of sewer lining, 15 locations of sectional lining, one sewer pipe replacement that consists about 140 feet of removal and placement of sewer pipe, 131 structures to be cleaned, 14 structural covers and frames to be replaced, 38 chimney, chimney tuck points, that's the, as the drainage structure narrows at the top, that's what's considered the chimney. So a tuck point is basically just reapplying some grout more to re-stabilize that brick or block. Six chimney reconstructs, it's taken, taken the structure down slightly to adjust it, to reconstruct it, and then one curblet inlet replacement. Four bids were received for this project. DMV Utilities was the low bidder with a project contract amount of $793,661.90. HRC's estimate for the construction cost was $869,000 and change. So you can see the contractor was very aggressive with his unit prices, and there were competitive unit prices as well. The low bid contract is within 10% of the HRC cost estimate. Staff's recommendation is to award the 2024 Bloomfield Township Stormwater System Rehab Project Contract to DVM Utilities, the amount of $793,661.90. ESD will be authorized to approve up to a 10% increase of the contract award. Contracts above 10%, but less than 15% will be approved by the township supervisor prior to ESD approving the increased contract amount, and contract costs above 15% will be approved by the Board of Trustees prior to ESD approving the increased contract amount based on unit prices. DVM is a contractor that we are very familiar with, and they have performed on projects within the township and our neighboring communities to a satisfactory level of completion. With that, I'll ask, any questions?
Any questions? I'd like some motions.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kalinsky, supported by Trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. See, it's good to go at the end. You get the questions. Next, we also have Corey.
Item number 11.
It's 14. Consider award of the Bloomfield Township Detention Basin.
10 and 11. So I labeled it as 10 and 11, so.
I feel like we just get to see you longer this way.
I'm feeling the love, honestly, at 10 o'clock.
You're not being hazed. So the Bloomfield Township Detention Basin Rehabilitation.
Yeah, so very similar to last presentation, the 2024 Bloomfield Township Stormwater Detention Basin Rehab Project Contract Award. Again, the major storm events in '21 caused flooding of roads and property throughout the township. Again, we've determined, the staff has determined that, discovered that township was conveyed ownership of multiple storm sewer systems and basins. In 2022, Bloomfield Township collaborated with HRC to develop a stormwater asset management plan and assess township-owned water, stormwater systems. Through the, this discovery, five locations, Hammond Lake Estates, Meadowlands of Bloomfield, Bloomfield Crossing, Hayden Pines, Shaker Heights, were all identified as basins that were owned by the township. This project consists of dredging two basins, and then evasive species treatment and removal, and four other basins, restoration in all five, and then landscaping restoration in all five of those locations. We received six bids. Anglin Civil LLC was a low bidder with a project contract amount of $468,251.86. HRC's estimate, estimated construction cost was $776,000, almost $777,000. So you can see, again, this contractor was very aggressive in this contract, in his bid. A low bid contract came in at 40% lower than HRC's estimated cost. Staff's recommendation is to award the 2024 Bloomfield Township Stormwater Detention Basin Rehab Project Contract to Anglin Civil LLC in the amount of $468,251.86. ESD is, and authorized ESD to approve up to a 10% increase of contract award amount. Contract costs above 10, but less than 15% to be approved by township supervisor prior to ESD approving the increased contract amount. And then contract costs above 15% will be approved by the board prior to ESD approving, approving the increased contract amount. Anglin, again, has been vetted by our consultants. We don't have staff, or the township doesn't have much experience with them, but through the vetting process, HRC has verified that they have, through their reviews, or that Anglin is a competent, capable contractor to do this work. Without any questions.
Any questions for Corey?
I'm really glad we're doing this, because we got to start working on these and start investing. So I'm very happy with this. Unless there's anything else, I'd like to make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Kalinsky, supported by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, and good night.
That's for you, Adam. Next, we have approval of payroll and vouchers for October 28th. Unless there's any changes, I would look for a motion.
I just had one question.
Yeah?
And I ran it by Jason earlier, but in, in the open house, and the expenses that came in, there was a $500 payment for the band, and I guess I didn't know that we pay the high school band to come. I thought that, I mean, I had kids in band for years, and maybe that's the way it is, but I never knew that there was a payment, so I didn't understand. And he just said, yeah, there was a payment.
So that one would have been approved through the cable department? So did he give you answer for that? Because I...
Other than it, there was a request for payment. So, yeah, that's, that's why I brought it up, because I just still didn't, wasn't clear on.
That would be something I could check with Carrie, because that goes through the cable department.
Yeah, curiosity mostly. So that was my only question in payroll and vouchers, that I'm still kind of like, I'll do, I'll talk to Carrie, no problem.
Yeah, no, and if you want, if you guys ever have questions, if you let me know, like, before, I can get you exact information. I just don't know off the top of my head why.
Yeah, well, and I didn't get to Jason till today, so that's on me. But he just said, yeah, it was, it was a request for payment. That's all he knew.
Okay.
He didn't get back to me, so he's good on that.
That one I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That passes. And last is motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Clerk Bruce.
Support.
Support by Trustee Murray.
We're going to fight over that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, everybody.